Alec, you want to let me know when we're live?
All right, we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session of July 16, 2024. Carol, if you'd please do the roll call.
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a full agenda today. We're going to open up with public portion, and then we've got five topics. We're going to have bids with Lisa Valchek, the zoning code amendments work group update with Kate Rogers, Tyler Borzak, and Jamison McWilliams. And we're also going to give folks an opportunity. You can either comment, I know a lot of people are here for that presentation. You can comment at public comment, or if you want to wait until after the presentation, we'll take comments then as well. Then we'll move on. Eric Schantz, our Housing Director, will be presenting two proposals. One is the EAF for the senior-only affordable housing proposed code change, and then employer-sponsored affordable housing development proposal. And then Mark Abramson from Natural Resources will be doing a presentation on Beech Tree Leaf Disease. And that'll be followed by liaison reports and then resolutions. But before we start, we're going to invite Sarah Davidson from the Friends of Georgia Capon. Welcome, Sarah.
Good morning. I almost fell down.
Can't have that.
On behalf of the Friends of Georgia Capon Foundation, I am happy to present to the town of East Hampton a check in the amount of $67,671.50. This represents a matching grant we secured from the Suffolk County Water Quality Protection and Restoration Program, which is funded by a quarter cent of our sales tax. The funds match other funds expended by Friends and the town of East Hampton to complete the planning for a storm water remediation design at the Route 27 rest stop at the head of Georgia Capon. The design and engineering are now complete, and when installed, will include improved capture and drainage before storm water reaches the pond, reduction in impervious surfaces, better access and enjoyment of the pond, and improved habitat. We could not have gotten to this point without the skilled leadership of the town of East Hampton's Natural Resources Department. And I'd like to particularly recognize Kim Shaw and Melissa Winslow. I know their colleague is here with, oh, anyway, sorry. And we all look forward to completing this critical project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
We're going to accept it as the board.
I think we're not, weren't you?
Yes, it wouldn't have been the day. It's not every day we get handed a check for $67,000 for such, you know, an important project. And folks know this is over at the rest stop on 27. And we've been working on this now for a couple of years. We've got engineering design, and we're getting close. And we're really grateful, Sarah, to and appreciate the continued partnership with the Friends of Georgia Capon and the town and the community and your commitment to everyone's well-being. So thank you so much.
I could just add in one thing to that. Also thanking Assemblyman Fred Thiel. He's been advocate for this project since the beginning on there. Also the Peconic Land Trust with Properties Next Door. As we have a crowd here, Sarah, I want to say this is a project of one of the gateways to East Hampton in this area there right now. And going everything from Thomas Creek into the pond, it will really change the way that people see how they can design appropriate bioswales and such to be able to retain storm water and also take out all the carcinogens or anything negative in them too. So it's a good project moving forward. And Sarah, do you have a timeframe on this? We're looking?
The project is ready. It's under review for its permits, and it's ready to bid. And so we hope, and we have implementation funding starting to line up in a significant way. And we hope that construction will start, dare I say, early 2025. I don't know.
That's great. Thanks, Sarah.
And you've had a lot of new news coming out of the Friends of Georgia Capon. I know that Fred Thiel is going to be the new Executive Director. And I just got an email this morning that our friend and my former colleague Larry Cantwell is joining the board. So, oh, great news. Absolutely. Thank you. If I could, LTV, Alec, I just want to confirm that we're streaming on YouTube?
We are.
Okay, and I see that you've adjusted camera A, which is great. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, beautiful. Okay, so now we've got some folks signed up. And like I had said earlier, you have the option if you want to speak now or if you want to speak after the presentation on the zoning code amendments. So the first up I have is Leonard Green.
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
The introduction. Hi. Good morning.
Can I just, Leonard, if you could, LTV, are you good now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Alec. Sorry.
Okay. Good morning, and thank you once again for the opportunity of addressing you. I want to talk about change, a trend I see in my neighborhood but all across town. I used to live in an affordable neighborhood. My neighbors were working people, carpenters, masons, painters, landscapers. Some worked in the local hardware store or at Town Hall. Some of us were middle-class professionals and retirees. That has all changed. My wife and I couldn't afford to buy a house here now, nor could the working people who were once the neighborhood's backbone. But that's not all that's changed. As my old neighbors moved on and sold their houses, there are lots changed. The people who bought them tore down the perfectly good existing houses, cleared lots from massive houses, pools, and expansive prestige lawns. The upscaling has not been good for affordability or the environment. According to a recent peer-reviewed article in Bioscience Magazine, the primary threat to biodiversity is habitat loss and degradation. Private residential land, yards, are among the most rapidly expanding systems on Earth. Furthermore, the ITCC informs us that land use is the source of 22% of global warming gases. Most of that results from our industrial farming practices and deforestation. But given the millions of acres occupied by residential properties, what we do with our residential land makes a difference. Given our climate crisis, we cannot afford to squander precious climate protecting resources. When we maximize house size, clear trees and native vegetation, and use land care practices that waste resources, we disrupt the very ecosystems that protect our ground and surface waters, that manage a healthy hydrology, that structure soils so that it can do its job of cycling nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus, and sequester carbon. We destroy habitat for essential insects, microbial communities, and other ecological workers that work silently, invisibly, and invisibly for a healthy environment. What we do with our properties has consequential, system-wide consequences. Right now, our systems are massively failing. Record heat, record flooding, record droughts, algal blooms, the list goes on. Do we have the courage to seriously confront overclearing and habitat destruction? Our young people are waiting for us to act meaningfully and responsibly. So I hope that the code changes that you are considering will take into account that the massive clearing, that just driving around town, you see lot after lot after lot cleared. And I know that we have revegetation requirements, but I drive around and I see oak hickory forest replaced by green giants and arbor vidai that are just lined around the outside of the property. And somehow, this passes. I hope that we can do better than that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, honors. Nancy Erber.
Hi, I'll be brief. Quite a coincidence. I also wanted to talk about overclearing. We walk around, we bike around, we drive around East Hampton, and we see bare ground everywhere. It's quite shocking, actually, that the native keystone plants, the trees like the oaks, the hickories, the pines, that really support the insects, the butterflies, the birds, the rest of the ecosystem above and below ground are not really considered essential, worth saving. When there's an examination made to see if a new house can go in or a house can be expanded, I've often noticed, and I think the Natural Resources Department does a great job, as does the zoning code enforcement, but they can't be everywhere and do everything at the same time. And I often see that, well, there are just some trees on this lot. We'll get rid of them. That's really a short-sighted attitude. We know that our groundwater is being polluted. We're overusing pesticides, herbicides, fertilizer. It's running into Gardener's Bay where I like to swim. We have an overuse and an inappropriate use of irrigation systems. People really don't know how to calibrate them, as Edwina Van Gogh often says. And I really hope that when you consider these zoning code changes, you'll think about inappropriate house size, inappropriate strain on our resources. I think the houses should really be zero energy. They should provide their own solar or geothermal rather than drawing from these enormous barn-like houses, drawing from our stressed system. But I really just want to talk about the overclearing. I hope that something can be done to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next up, I have Erwin Levy. Welcome, Erwin. It's good to have you back.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back. Good morning. My name's Erwin Levy. I'm a 35-year resident of Springs. I'd also like to discuss the code for a minute. We all tend to be nostalgic, and we romanticize the past, the good old days. The architectural critic Paul Goldberg once said, "East Hampton is not a museum, frozen in time." He's right. But the changes, you know, we are witnessing now, perhaps due to our current code, is particularly glaring. It goes beyond the visual that we all can see, the supersizing of houses, the overclearing of land, the view sheds forever lost. It's colossal waste of natural resources, heating, cooling, irrigating these often vacant places. Much of what we are seeing isn't just limited to the estate-sized or the south-of-the-highway parcels. It's happening in the more modest parts of our town, in Springs where I live. Smaller homes, the kind of places local families used to buy, used to rent. They're being knocked down. They're being redeveloped, large in both size and price, for a very different clientele, exacerbating an ever-more fragile affordable housing crisis. For me, as a 35-year resident, respectfully, it feels like we have been in a state of paralysis regarding our building code. The town seems to be changing at a breakneck pace by extracting from a place rather than contributing to it. I'll ask the same question the late William Pickens of Sag Harbor Hills did. Are we a community or are we a commodity? Thank you.
Next up, I have Martha Crizzle. I hope I'm pronouncing it properly. Crizzle. Sure. No, no, you're good. Christina Buckley. Welcome, Christina.
Hi, thank you. Christina Buckley from East Hampton. I'm going to be brief and pretty direct. The main thing is I'm frustrated. This special group, the Zoning Code Amendment Group, was formed over a year ago, I think, May 2023, to look at zoning and overdevelopment. Since then, there has been only one public work session this past May 7, in which all that was proposed was looking at basements and garages. This does not seem like nearly enough. Why aren't you addressing maximum house-size formula, setbacks, minimum clearance allowance? When I drive around East Hampton, I see property after property that have been built to the edges of their lot, looming over next-door neighbors, creating a maxed-out property that is overbearing and not keeping in character with the neighborhoods. Please do something. Please do something. Something more than nothing. If you do nothing, then all that us citizens can surmise is that you're firmly in the pockets of realtors, developers, and big money.
Next up is Pablo Spiller.
Good morning. I'm supervisor of the rest of the board. A pleasure to be here. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm a resident of Waynescott and come to talk here about the situation with traffic and speed in the neighborhood, which has seen a substantial increase since the pandemic, particularly as it relates to through traffic and in particular roads such as Waynescott Main and Waynescott Stone Road. The police reports that are produced monthly show a significant increase in speed in 2024. For example, less than 20% of the overall traffic, overall traffic, is speed compliant, meaning less than 30 miles per hour. This is drastic, and in fact, the average speed, there is something like 17 or 20% of those above 40 miles per hour in general during the day, including at night. And at peak time, which is from 11:00 to 3:00 or so, the speed is above that, and the percentage goes to around 20%. I encourage you to look into, I'm talking about that concerning particularly Waynescott Stone Road, for which I have done most of the analysis for the speed. I encourage you to look at the speed reports that the police produces monthly. It's not that difficult, and you will see the increase, the drastic increase. This creates a substantial problem for the neighborhood. As you know, we are close to, these roads lead to the beach, Beach Lane Beach, and we all walk to the beach. And this speed, both southbound and northbound, creates serious risk to the families who walk with the kids and pets and so on. Now, Waynescott Stone Road in particular is a mile road, almost mile road, mile-long road, and has no traffic limitations in the sense that there is no speed bumps during the whole, from the Montauk Highway all the way to Waynescott Main or Searse. There is no stop sign, and there is no crosswalk anywhere in that. And on top of that, it's on a decline coming southbound, so speed, the cars speed up, as we all do, bikers also we do, and enjoy that ride down. But for cars, it's particularly problematic. I have clock with my phone, cars above 60 miles per hour on Waynescott Stone Road. This is a really dangerous thing. I encourage you to try to figure out ways to implement some speed limitations as well as traffic limitations, the speed bumps, stop signs. There is a particular stop sign that will be very, very useful is on the intersection of Waynescott Stone Road and Waynescott Northwest, which there is only one stop sign for Waynescott Northwest, but nothing for the Waynescott Stone Road traffic. This is, as I mentioned, important for the neighborhood to regain a little bit of neighborhood sense that we had before, and we now are losing rapidly. And obviously, for safety reasons, not to have an incident as we had in town line before that we had an accident with a person being killed. So this is all I have. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Pablo. Andrea, I'm sorry, I can't read her handwriting for your last name with a K. Welcome, Andrea.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Künsel, and I can only agree with what the previous speaker said before. My comments are more my personal observations, so not as buttoned up and scientific as the previous speakers. But I've lived on Church Lane in Springs for 11 years, and I'm out and about with my dog or on my bike a lot. And while I'm out, I see so much clearing, new construction, roadkill, pesticide application signs, and traffic overload, and it really breaks my heart. It breaks my heart to an extent that I feel that I cannot stomach another smashed turtle or orphaned fawn. I also swim daily in Gardener's Bay, and I have noticed how dirty the water has become in addition to seeing concerning water quality reports. Being surrounded by water means we have to live with very finite natural resources and therefore need a development hard stop now if we want to leave this beautiful place in decent shape to future generations. I would even go as far as we have a moral obligation to control overdevelopment in order to preserve our means of livelihood. The well-being of the vast majority should have priority over the financial interests of a few individuals. I therefore believe that limiting oversized construction and homes will have a huge impact and affect the fewest of us residents. It cannot be that we let developers and investors destroy our very home, meaning ecosystem, natural resources, and wildlife. I also believe there should be more stringent building size limitations for smaller lots, as I lately see more and more 3,000 to 4,000-square-foot homes squeezed onto real small properties. And we need to think about clearing restrictions, especially in areas closer to natural preserves and to the water. So we preserve larger plots of somewhat intact nature and ecosystems. And there should be much more impactful penalties for unauthorized clearing instead of replanting some shrubs that will never replace what was taken down in the first place. I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to share my observations, concerns, and thoughts with you. Thank you very much.
Lou Cortese. Sure. Gail Pellet.
Thank you.
Good morning, Gail. Good morning, and thank you for inviting the community to address this really critical and existential issue before us. It's not easy, and we all know it. I'm Gail Pellet. I've either lived full-time or part-time on or near Sammy's Beach Road for 35 years. I'm also a co-founder of Change Hampton, which is responsible largely for organizing the community that created this magnificent garden outside the window. And I think it's relevant to our discussion today because we did it as a model, an ecological model, to inspire and educate our community about what we ought to be doing and should be doing versus promoting healthy biodiverse landscaping. Anyway, so thank you. We all know we have a huge challenge in this community with overdevelopment, the building of ever-larger homes. We've heard multiple people address this. The clearing of more and more critically important trees and plants to accommodate those big constructions with their pools, outbuildings, garages, and driveways. It is an environmental challenge and a housing affordability challenge. This board and various committees here are challenged to propose and pass new regulations to protect our precious and fragile environment. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be your and our guide for the principles of how we move forward with zoning code regulations and the climate emergency resolution. We can probably agree that when tasked with reexamining proposals and regulations, it's easy to fall into the trap of reducing the larger challenge into tidbits, into bureaucratic details, to lose sight of the larger picture. We are at this moment, as a community, when far too much precious ecological habitat has been cleared and built over and often replaced by dead ecological zones like decks, turf lawns, outbuildings, and pools. As I know, that you all know, ever-bigger construction projects mean more and more cement trucks, trailer tractor trucks, flatbed trucks, dump trucks, and vans and cars moving bumper to bumper through Suffolk County and our community. We have more traffic than this town can support right now. It means more and more carbon and pollutants in our air as well as surface and groundwater. Bigger and bigger construction means more and more waste that has to go somewhere. Then, when the construction is completed, it means more and more trucks and vans and carts to then maintain and service those mega properties and houses. The reality gives a lie to resiliency. If there's a huge storm, we all know, we've already reached the point where there is no escape. There is no way we are going to be able to evacuate. We have already passed that turning point. And then, there are multiple other problems that come with overdevelopment and more construction of larger properties, the noise pollution. You see the people who own those properties, building those gigantic houses, are not living here with the noise pollution of construction. Or the contractors who are building on spec don't seem to care about this community, about our rights as the people who live here to enjoy the peaceful, quiet, and healthful environment of our own properties. But that right is now built into our New York State Constitution. Larger houses also mean more bathrooms, more septics, putting stress on our very fragile wetlands, bays, ponds, harbors, and oceans, our groundwater and drinking water, another whole avenue of investigation here. Last year, there was an outpouring in this room of this community to express their exasperation with this issue, pleading for sense about preserving the rural character, the affordability of housing, protecting our environmental health, sustainability and resiliency were key words. And I'm sure that you've heard from many folks in this community. There'll be some in this room who have asked for a moratorium or who would wish for a moratorium on any future building. That's a really hard place to get to. Okay, so I'm going to wrap this up. My husband and I bought our under 2,000-square-foot house, a product of an earlier generation, when people just wanted a beach cottage on Sammy's Beach Road. And during the 35 years we've been in this neighborhood, we've watched those simple beach houses replaced by larger and larger houses. Now, the Zoning Board of Appeals has approved an approximately 6,000-square-foot house.
Gail, you're well over five minutes, and it's a three-minute limit, so if you could please wrap up.
Well, I just want to say in conclusion of what number of people here have addressed, the larger homes on limited lots, welcome to Nassau County.
Thank you. Stefan Van Damme. LTV, we're still not seeing in here what you're broadcasting. I don't see the clock. All I see is a large shot of the dais. So if there's a way that you could put up what is being streamed, it would be most helpful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm board supervisor.
Hi, Ward Supervisor. I'll take, I'm going to be very brief here, so make up the time.
And the only reason I say that is there are a lot of people that want to speak today, and I want to give everybody an opportunity. And I'm sure there's folks on the line, too.
Okay. My name is Stefan Van Dam. I've lived on Sammy's Beach Road and swum in Three Mile Arbor for the last 35 years. I welcome your efforts to try to regulate and rein in the rampant overdevelopment that affects not just the health of our air and water, but our own mental and physical health. I'd like to focus my comments today on water, our most precious resource, and especially groundwater, the invisible ocean beneath our feet, and its rise as a result of sea level rise caused by global warming. I see it on my own property every day. Groundwater rise represents an existential threat against which we have no defense. The real concern is that inundation from below will mobilize contaminants and poisons that have been lurking in the soil for years. We all know we live where ocean, bay, pond, and groundwater freely mix, just two feet removed from septic leach fields, industrial poisons, oil tanks, dry cleaning fluids, and in some cases, raw sewage. Then, we expect to drink from the water below it. I have these five questions. Are the proposed zoning changes a meaningful reduction in the dimensional table formula given the climate crisis we're in? How many more 5,000 to 10,000 square foot houses with its attendant number of bathrooms can our fragile environment's stomach? Two, will the proposed changes help regenerate the natural world we have already lost, or just kick the can down the road and ultimately exacerbate the problem? And how do these changes help address our current water quality and septic crises? Three, is the proposed two-foot separation between a septic leach field and our groundwater sufficient to prepare against the threat of rising groundwater? Have we done sufficient research to ascertain this? Four, are we certain that we're keeping the comprehensive plan front and center, and that the proposed zoning changes are aligned with the language of its vision statement on pages seven and eight, which stipulate for East Hampton to be a green community, a leader in protecting the environment, and to reduce the impacts of human habitation to groundwater? Five, and final, do we really need to play with fire by allowing the dangerous and unsustainable overdevelopment to continue, or can we come to our senses and realize that you can't drink the money? Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. And the last person I've signed up is Lynn Bloemfeld. Welcome, Lynn.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us. Last time I was here, I sang this line from a Joni Mitchell song. "Don't it always seem to go? You don't know what you got till it's gone." It's going. It's going really, really fast. Almost everyone who just spoke to you used the word crisis. When the house is on fire, you don't send it to a committee to discuss how to put the fire out. You take action quickly. And I think it was Christine Buckley, or something like that, who mentioned that we are dragging our feet. We need to do something. We need to do something yesterday. We need to do something 10 years ago, and we need to do something far more radical than what we're doing now. And this really isn't just a question of natural resources. It's also a question of rich versus poor. And pretty much anyone who owns a house in East Hampton, or in the town, is rich on paper. But what it feels like, what it feels like is they get what they want with minimal fines, and we are losing or have lost the backbone of our community. Please don't let it just disappear. Please. Thank you.
So that's everyone I have signed up right now. And so now I'll take a show of hands. Go ahead, Larry, you had your hand up first.
Hi, guys. First of all, thank you so much to
Just need to state your name for the record.
Larry Kane, local builder, at risk of being shot in this crowd, and resident. But what I would like to say, with the jokes aside, is I agree with everything that's been said today. And what we need to do moving forward is take a look at our zoning as a big, scary, ugly thing, and we need to start fixing it right away. I agree, town water is critical. But as someone who's built 100 houses, my most recent, some of them big houses, don't pollute the water. They've got very expensive, low nitrogen systems that don't go into the groundwater. Some of the first houses I built 40 years ago, because everyone had them, have buried steel oil tanks which are leaking into the groundwater today. So what we need to do is not say, the bad people with spas in their basement, these people, you, me, let's come together as a group, let's talk constructively about zoning, let's get rid of a lot of the fertilizers on our lawn, let's put in solar, great septic systems, let's talk about the massing of houses, let's keep our basements, I got to put the plug in there for a basement, let's come together and let's fix this. There are a lot of great people in the building community, architects, surveyors, who have a lot of constructive things to say about this. We've heard from a lot of great people this morning with some great ideas. Let's come together and get this done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Larry. Good morning. Welcome.
My name is Carol Steinberg. I live in Springs. It is up to you and all of us to protect the character and feel of the East Hampton we love. As we can all see, it is slipping away with each house sale. I used to love Amagansett. I stayed at the Seabreeze on Atlantic Avenue before I built my house. I used to look at the house next door. I loved the line of the roof, and I looked at it before I built my house. Now that house is gone, and it's been replaced by a huge house that covers a whole lot. I used to love to go to Atlantic Beach, and as we all know, now there's a huge house there. I don't want to go to Atlantic Beach anymore. The Amagansett that we love is disappearing. Now it is happening in Springs. I live in the bucolic part of, it's all bucolic, and near the historic part. I love it there. The lot next door was recently purchased. The whole lot has been cleared, or 95% of it. There's a huge, huge house going up with accessory structures that's going to cover the whole lot with a pool. I don't even think they have to revegetate, which isn't even sufficient. And the overclearing, which is everyone has spoken about, is heartbreaking. We must keep in mind that with each house sale, a charming house is demolished and replaced by a mega mansion. In addition, all the trees are just gone. The builders claim that the economy will be destroyed if we limit house size. I maintain that it will be destroyed if we do not. I don't want to go to Atlantic Beach anymore. I don't want to stay at the Seabreeze, even if I needed a place to stay. And there may come a time when I don't want to go to my house in Springs. I don't want to live there. And it'll become another mega mansion with a treeless lot. Lot by lot, East Hampton, we know, in love, is being destroyed. I believe in this so strongly that I am leaving my house to the Conic Land Trust in my will. And there already, there's a conservation easement, there's a conservation easement that goes with it that says, the house, which is 2,000 square feet on an acre lot, can only be increased by 200 square feet, and it cannot be destroyed unless it's deemed unsafe. So, I ask you, for all of us, limit maximum house size. Stop the overclearing. Don't let East Hampton become suburbia. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Jolie.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I just want to start by appreciating
You could just state your name for the record.
Jolie Parcher, East Hampton. I want to start by appreciating all of you, because, you know, your love of this town, I can't, I mean, you're here, you're working, you're going to meetings, you have people complaining to you all the time. So, for me, that really just shows how much you care and want to do things. So I want to appreciate that from the start. I'm not even going to look at my notes, because I feel like it's been said much better than what I wrote down this morning. But I think it's amazing that so many of us are saying the same thing. And I think it's great, Larry, you know, talking about how we do need to work together. We do need to find solutions that, you know, understand that there are people making their living off of building, but have as a priority the idea that we are caretakers of this property. I think you all know that, and you're hearing all these different voices from all different people, and I can't imagine the task you have at hand. But that's the task you chose, and that's the task we, you know, we voted for you to do, is to take that hard position. I know, as an owner of something, and it's hard to sometimes say the things that some people don't want to hear. But we need you to do it. We need you to do it. And I think that you have come up with a plan that sounded good when I first heard it, this idea of cutting from 20,000 to 10,000, which is absurd to think that sounds good, 10,000 square feet. But I thought, oh, okay, change. And then I realized that's got nothing to do with lot size. That's got nothing to do with how much, you know, the septic systems and the groundwater and all those different pieces of the puzzle. So fortunately or unfortunately for you, you are in that powerful position and have done the research and have spent the time. And it's your job to find a formula that truly does what you know in your hearts when you see another house being built. You know, it's got to be done for real, not that just looks good. And if some people have to be hurt by it, then, and, you know, there's other people being, more people being hurt that need to have your protection. And what somebody said, are we a community or commodity? And I really think that's what it comes down to. And so, you know, please, please, follow your hearts. I know you know this, and you're trying to figure it out, but go from your head to your heart and do what you know is right. Thank you.
Welcome, Chris.
Good morning. My name is Christopher DiSuno, an architect in East Hampton, second-generation architect, I think, third in my family name, but my lineage goes back to the beginning of East Hampton Town. I have a lot of love for this town. I served 10 years on the Architecture Review Board and on multiple committees by the town. 20 years ago, I was a member of a 15-architect committee advising, we put together reports for the town board. When they were working on the comprehensive plan, and we've dug some of those out, and I have recently pulled together more than a dozen other professionals, surveyors, land planners, builders, architects. We all agree that there is really important actions that need to be taken to improve the town code. A lot of instances of things that have been put forward, we can call low-hanging fruit. And I think it would be wonderful if we could just grab those things and adopt them right away. There are some other bigger issues that really need to be addressed carefully. And one of the things that I stood up, I believe it was in front of McGinty, with drawings demonstrating, here's a square foot house, and here's the same square foot house that looks very different, and the example was in Amagansett. I think GFA was implemented at that time, and it is only a small portion of how we can regulate the house size in East Hampton Town. We have coverage, we have clearing, which I agree with everyone here, that can severely be reduced. There are a number of things that have been brought up today, and when these specific instances of entire lot clearing are brought up, they need to be shared. I'd love to know what some of these houses that everybody's seeing next door to themselves, where they are, and why they're not being addressed with code enforcement, and what's happening, how they would have gotten past and permitted in the first place, or some things were changed after the fact. I mean, it's our own job to self-police. So, there are also a lot of other things going on, and I understand why this is a crisis right now. There's also, all across the world, travel has become an issue. You see, all of our state parks are overcrowded. Venice is now charging people for day tickets. We saw what happened here last weekend. We also have a massive problem with our youth not having a place to live. How we balance that between house size, expanding my own house for my grown son to live with me, or parents, you know, it's, there's a lot to balance here and a lot to discuss. I'm going to continue to expand my group of, like I said, more than a dozen professionals that work with the code every single day and try to give advice to the committee on how we think we can help reduce this and address these items. Shutting things down, as was suggested, will affect a lot of local people in a really bad way. So I'd be very careful about a moratorium. But we only started after Kate and her committee put her presentation together last meeting a couple of months ago. And I think having all of us as professionals that do this every day, we've been meeting once a week since then, I think maybe we can step that up further and really address some of the issues in hand. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. The gentleman in the back, you had your hand up first. Sorry, it's blocked by the post here. We have to...
Hi to all. My name is Richard Mumbi, first-time caller. I'm a resident of East Hampton, and I'm here to voice my support in stricter, support for stricter zoning guidelines in East Hampton. First, let's acknowledge the profound impact that some from the real estate industry and spec house builders have had on our community. The character of East Hampton has been shattered by the relentless pursuit of industry profit for very few. Countless charging, excuse me, countless charming, more modest historic homes owned by people with diverse incomes have been demolished. Native and mature landscaping has been bulldozed to make way for oversized monstrosities built not for families living and contributing to this community, but for house flippers and those seeking to maximize rental incomes. We need to decide if our zoning rules are solely about maintaining property values. If that's the case, we must be honest about the factors that influence property value. It's not just size, taste, style, the provenance of the home, landscaping, the overall appeal of the town are crucial. The beauty and charm of East Hampton is incomparable, contributing to the appeal and value of the homes. Examples of affluent small towns that have benefited from restrictive building rules abound. Kennebunkport, Carmel by the Sea have successfully maintained their unique character and improved quality of life for all residents while seeing property values rise. Conversely, towns like Nantucket, Aspen have allowed real estate industry, real estate industry interests to supersede the interests of citizens. This has resulted in an overdevelopment of expensive homes and a dearth of housing for those needed to work in the town. This creates an endless cycle of affordable housing needs placed on the shoulders of the town and leads to overcrowding of a rural community. Therefore, I urge the town board to consider, one, with urgency, pursue and approve aggressive changes to constrain maximum building size relative to lot size, and better address setbacks. Two, implement the recommended much stricter rules enforcement for basements, garages, and ADUs. Three, acknowledging that tax policy likely falls under different jurisdictions, consider more aggressive and creative taxes targeting larger homes. Four, develop greater incentives for maintaining existing and Four, develop greater incentives for maintaining existing and historic homes. And five, expand historic districts and equip the ARB to hold architects and builders to higher standards. By preserving East Hampton's historical and charming homes and maintaining its appeal as a small rural town, we can create a community where people want to live, not just invest. Let's not allow short term profits for few to dictate the long term fate of our beloved town. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a woman in the back, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I have, Jess, how are you? Sorry, you're.
I don't want to, I'm Jess Frost. I've lived in East Hampton for over 50 years. I run an art center in Springs. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. I want to thank everyone who came here and spoke about the the importance of of making sure that we limit the development that's going on on the east end. I grew up in a town called Roslin in Nassau County. My father was a, an architect who specialized in historic preservation. I've watched that beautiful, small, historic town become flanked by giant buildings. It's the reason why I chose to live here. And and I admire you all so much for having the courage to attack what has already passed its tipping point. And yeah, I guess that's it. But thank you all so much for making this initiative and to Jane for informing all of us as a community how important it is. Thanks.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Perry Burns. I've been a resident out here for 35 years. If any of you have ever taken a flight over Long Island, you realize what a fragile area of land Long Island and especially the South Fork is. We are literally a spit of sand sticking out into the ocean. So this environment is extremely fragile. We've heard everybody speak who lives here, all these people live here, you live here, we know all the issues. So, you know, we've heard people talk about clearing land, building lot size, the percentage of building on certain sized lots. These are all issues that we already know about. If we've driven around here, we've seen the traffic. We know that it feels, it just feels like we're at sort of a tipping point at a crucial time in the development of this area. So I really, you know, for better and worse, all of you are the people that are in power here. And you have the power to make these changes and you can make them now. We know all the issues and I really encourage you to make these changes. So thanks.
Thank you. Jose? Welcome, Jose.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, supervisor. My name is Jose Arandia and I'm a resident of Wayne Scott. And I'm here to talk about the fact that the traffic situation in Wayne Scott has really gotten out of control. It has been exacerbated to the point that it is difficult to walk on the streets of Wayne Scott. We, as the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee, have worked very diligently on some recommendations for traffic calming approaches. We have put in information together with the help of the board. We have also created some maps that identify both crosswalks and stop signs that we are recommending for the town to seriously consider and hopefully implement. It's a project we have been working on for a while and we had hoped to institute some part of it in the summer of 2024 so that we could see how effective it would be. And I would encourage the town to seriously consider these proposals. I believe that they are going to be presented by our liaison this coming week. And I look forward to the public hearing portion of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Hard to see, but. Hi, Dan. Couldn't recognize you with your hat on.
Hiding back there. Dan Mongan, I live in Amagansett. I had a lot on my mind, but so much has been said so well. I just wanted to say that I came here for the environment and the beaches, but I stayed for the people. And I salute you guys. I love it and I love you all. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know it's not easy. I know you get plenty of criticism sometimes from me. But I would say this, I personally think your biggest risk is to do too little, not to do too much. So I encourage you, I exhort you, I implore you to take a big swing at this one and do something that creates a change that we can see. And I guarantee you, from my perspective, I'll be 100% with you. If you go too far, I'll help you get it right.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to be heard? Barry? Welcome, Barry.
Barry Raybeck, resident of Wayne Scott, also a member of the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee. Thanks for the hearing, thanks for all the supportive and thoughtful remarks. I would just like to note that the the pressure on you is perhaps not as great as as some would say, being as how you are a five person board, all of the same party who get elected at about a 70% or 75% rate each year. So it's not like you're fighting against some tide. I mean, yes, there are huge developmental, development interests and the monetary interests are strong. But in terms of the residents who are primarily Democrats, who are almost entirely environmentalists, you really are on a, you could see this as a roller coaster ride. You have such tremendous support for these things. So behind the scenes, the outside interests, billionaires, et cetera, but they don't vote here. And they don't really care about this place. They just use it as a playground. I call it East Hampton Playland. There's a letter I've written in the Star this week. It will come out about all the things that need to be done and how, you know, this is, we've, we're closing the barn door after the horse is long gone, long gone. I've lived here basically my entire life. And I wrote an, a guest words in the Star in 1984 about the gashes in the landscape as as roads were going in off 114 and off all the highways and byways were more and more developments. That was 1984. Now we see the result of it and it's unrecognizable. You can't even, I took me 25 minutes to drive here from Wayne Scott today. It's 10 minutes in the winter time. So if you keep cramming more and more people into the same space, it reminds me of, you know, the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. We're doing the wrong thing over and over. We don't care about the environment. And the ultimate problem that several people have mentioned is going to be groundwater. And what we're doing is absolutely unconscionably irresponsible. And I would implore you, using previous words, not to do half measures. 10,000 square foot is a huge house. Martha's Vineyard, we saw a film hosted by Jane last fall, 2,500 feet, they limited the house. That's a big house. 3,500, that's a big house. My, my house is 2,400, it's a big house. 10,000, that's still too big. You have to have some serious, serious problems require serious, serious solutions. Courage, I don't think it's so much a matter of courage because you got everybody with you.
Thank you, Barry. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board? Alec, is there anyone on the line?
It is Zach right now. Um, yes, we have some people on the line. Okay, caller 27, oh, sorry, okay, caller 24802. You are now live. Caller 4602.
4602?
Yes, that's you, yes.
Hi, good morning. This is Betsy Petrowski with a quick call and just to say that I'm very grateful and glad to support the new zoning group and their efforts to reel in what we all know to be an over expansion of build outs and clearings throughout our town. While the items on the agenda today are a good start, please let's not forget the most important piece of this initiative. That is to reduce overall sizes of houses allowed under our current zoning codes. And also to revise revise the current setbacks so supersized houses will not be allowed. The same narrow setback was reasonable modestly built homes on the same size properties. I know we can do this, we'll all work together. And so I thank you for allowing everybody to speak and good luck to everybody. But let's all get to work soon. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Betsy. Zach, is there anyone else on the line?
Yes. So caller 9370, you are now live.
Hi there. Good morning, good afternoon, I guess now. Supervisor and town board members, this is Jessica James. And I live on Montauk where I designed and built my home in 2009. The house blueprints called for a 3,500 square feet of living space on a one acre lot. However, having been inspired by Sarah Suzonka's book titled The Not So Big House, I recommended, if you can find it still, I went back to the drawing board and reduced my house size from 3,500 to 2,400 square feet. I can honestly say that I have never missed those extra 1,100 square feet. I'm proud to live in a climate smart community. And I applaud the town for taking up the challenge of reimagining our building codes and zoning as I see these as being inextricably linked to the town's comprehensive energy vision and the energy policies that continue to flow from that vision. When we consider the energy that is used in the process of demolition and in producing and transporting the materials required for new buildings, we can see that a reduction of square footage fits neatly into energy focused policies. Besides questions of square footage, energy efficiencies and smart domestic water use regulation, I look forward to a time when the town can develop policies that reward builders for repurposing existing buildings so that they do not clog our landfills and create an incentive structure for building with recycled and locally sourced materials. We have a wonderful model for that right here with our own historic and repurposed town complex buildings. As the town looks at the challenge of zoning and building codes and policy, I hope that we can all widen the lens from time to time to examine how all these pieces fit together to reduce our carbon footprint and make a positive impact on our climate crisis. And, you know, finally, I would say that maybe it's time to start designating specific communities and neighborhoods. Here in Montauk, I'm thinking about Shepherd's Neck. I'm talking about Claude and Shores, Lejerama Development and Ditch Plains specifically. And start limiting the sizes of houses so that they're in keeping with the original in Lejerama, for instance, 1,000 square foot houses, which were appropriate for a one fifth of an acre property. And they've now been replaced with 3,500 square foot two story dwellings and pools. So I, 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 I hope that you think about the implications to neighborhoods. I think that there could be some designations that could be useful. And for any entrepreneurs out there, I think you should think about starting an architectural salvage yard. I don't think we have one locally, I'm not sure. But that could help with people on on fixed incomes and lower incomes to fix up their properties. Anyway, thank you all very much for your attention and good luck with this project.
Thank you, Jesse. Zach, is there another caller on the line?
Yes, we do. Caller 2148, 2148, you are live.
Yes, hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is Peter Lornitis. I only rise to say a couple of quick things. One, I appreciate everybody's effort to this very important topic and this very important project. But I do want to say that we should exercise caution here and not go to extremes. I think we're trying to curtail the extremes that are damaging to the environment. But let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater. I only say that as an owner of a cottage for maybe about five years now in Amagansett. And I hope to make Amagansett my home for the next 30, 40 years. I might be part of the next generation to live and retire in Amagansett. But I spent a lot of money for a half acre lot with a 1,200 foot cottage on it. And I'd love to live there with my family, my two kids that are now older. And quite frankly, the house is too small for four people to live in. And I'd like to rebuild it someday into my dream home, my forever home. But I get scared to death when I hear a lot of the comments here about let's curtail construction or let's severely limit. And I don't know what that means. Am I going to build a 10,000 square foot house? No, I want to build a modest two story home that I could call my forever home and enjoy it with my family and live there near the water. But I want to make sure we don't take measures that actually curtail normal people like me where my nest egg is my home in Amagansett. I'd like to one day build my dream home that I could live in with my family forever. I'm not a developer, I'm not a flipper. But don't, don't hurt me, the next generation that wants to live in Amagansett for the next 30, 40 years by overly restricting the the rules that I currently enjoy and what I had hoped to do. So I just implore the board and everybody to exercise caution here and not throw out the baby with the bathwater. The extremes, I think, are good to curtail. But let's just not go overboard as well and injure, you know, what I look to be as myself, the next generation that wants to live in Amagansett forever and enjoy a modest home. Let's not, let's not restrict us in that way, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Zach, is there anyone else on the line?
Yes. Caller 20299, 0299, you are on the air.
Yes, good afternoon, Supervisor Burke Gonzalez, members of the town board. This is Carolyn Logan Gluck calling. I'm living in Wayne Scott and I'm speaking only on my own behalf this morning. And just wanted to say a huge thank you to the supervisor for putting the zoning code amendment working group update on today's agenda. And a huge thank you to the zoning code amendment working group for everything that you've accomplished so far. You established purposes and goals that are now more closely aligned with the comprehensive plan and its updates. And you have presented proposals that then were revised in keeping with public comments as well as what you've heard with after some wonderfully productive engagement with members of the building industry. And so I would like to compliment you on that and to encourage you to continue moving forward. The steps in today's update, I understand, closed loopholes. To me, as a total amateur, they look very reasonable. I certainly hope the basements won't be deeper than 15 feet tall. I wouldn't mind seeing the depth to groundwater increased from two to four feet, given that we know that groundwater is rising. But there's a lot that's good in it. And I especially liked surveys indicating the natural or at least existing grade of the properties as being part of any application. But this is just a start. And so I want to encourage you to take courage from the comments that you've heard prior to mine this morning. You have a lot of tools at your disposal when you look at the, at the formal formula, the dimensional tables, have lot coverage, GFA setbacks, all of which are such important and powerful tools in terms of helping shape what the built environment in East Hampton could look like. And your appointed boards, the ARB, the ZBA, they need your support. They can't do it alone. And and I invite those of you who question about overclearing and large houses to take a drive through Wayne Scott, which, as you know, is made up of farmland and woodland. And you don't have to own, but travel north on Wayne Scott Hollow Road to see how our majestic youth sheds across farmland that is still in agricultural production are impacted by the construction of large residences along their peripheries, let alone. by the construction of large residences along their peripheries, let alone formerly wooded roads such as Sayer's Pass now being cleared because there are no clearing restrictions. And that's changing the character of that. So go take a drive and you can see what's happening. So please have courage. You have two goals ahead of you. One, look at those dimensional tables, bring them up to date so well as you have already with other, with the purposes. And two, take a look at what might could be, what could be done with a tree protection order. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you, Carolyn. Zach, are there any other callers?
Yes, we have one more caller, I believe. Oh two six one, oh two six one, you are live. Caller oh two six one, are you there? Yes. You are live.
You can hear me fine, thank you. Enjoyed listening to all the comments. It was really highly educated citizens that really looked into this and know their stuff.
Excuse me?
Sorry, Thomas Plant, I live in East Hampton, I live in the Sammy's Beach area.
I'm sorry.
And like I said, hello?
Could you just state your name for the record again? I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
Yeah, Thomas, Thomas Plant, Thomas Plant, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. So in, in any event, I think a lot has been said. I agree with all the comments about getting these houses onto better spacing within the lots. The one thing I fear is, and I live in an area that has these historic cottages, a lot of them, and I fear the sore thumb effect, that, that all of a sudden, one day, you're going to be living next to or down the road from, from a giant sore thumb. And there's actually a few examples of that already happening in my neighborhood. And, and this has to be addressed. It's just so defeating when, when, when you've lived in an area and then next door to you, 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 you have it onstrosity. It's, it's just something that has to be avoided. And, and this is hand in hand with the reduction of the vegetation that's going on and it doesn't seem to be a lot of follow-up. Houses are going on, there's no vegetation and, and we don't want to live like that out here. So that, that, that has to be taken into account and I, I, I hope you guys do a good job. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. So Zach, is that everyone that's on the line?
Um, caller, we did caller oh two nine nine, right? He just didn't hang up? Yeah, I just wanted to double check, he just didn't hang up. Yeah, other than that, you guys are good.
Okay, great. Now we're going to move on to topics and we start with bids. Lisa Valchuk.
I just want to say before everyone leaves, I hope that people that have spoke today will stay for the presentation because I think that it's important to see the presentation and hear why these codes are being presented at this time. Thank you.
I'll be quick. So we're just going to accept a few bids and one extension. We're accepting bid EH slash SAG dash twenty four dash nine oh one HVAC repairs services and installation. That's going to be awarded to best climate control.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're accepting bid number EH twenty four dash zero two three, which is food service and kitchenware items, which is being awarded to Movilla Foods of New York and Samtow. Accepting bid number EH twenty four dash zero two zero, supply and delivery of auto parts. That's being awarded to Advanced Auto Parts, Grade A Petroleum, Morgan Auto Supply and Fleet Pride. And we'll be extending bid number EH twenty two dash zero three one, which is the annual drainage contract A, B and C, and that goes to Keith Grimes Incorporated.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. So next up, we have the zoning code amendments work group update. And Tyler, if you could pull that presentation up. Perfect, it's full screen. Charlie, will you run that? Thanks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tyler.
So Tyler, I'm just going to kick off first before you get into the nuts and bolts of the presentation. So I just want to reframe for everyone where we are on this update and what the zoning code amendment group, the ZCAWG, that's not a lot to, to say, has, has come to these recommendations at this time. I hear a lot of talk about these recommendations kind of being, you know, easy peasy and not really meaningful, but I just want to lay out why these particular recommendations are in front of us now. I hope folks watched the first presentation that laid out the issues that we were seeing in the town regarding two-story houses becoming three-story houses allowable in our town code as it is written now, as well as with our dimensional table as we have it right now. If you, a limitation is thirty five hundred square foot on a half acre, how come there's seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand square foot houses allowed to be built? So for what I looked at the code and our group came up with was, we needed to start from the beginning. And I know that's frustrating for people and it feels like it takes a long time, but the first area that we addressed was the fact that we did not require an update for a CFO, certificate of occupancy, which shows what's built on your property, has a survey attached to it. We did not have that requirement at transfer of sale. So the first issue that we were dealing with is, we didn't know what was being built out there. Because unless a bank required it, houses could transfer without a recording of what the record, the historical record of building on that property. So if something was built illegally, nobody knew about it and it continued to go. If it was built outside of present GFA, it continued to be passed down and passed down. So the first thing we did is, we got to know what's on properties. Otherwise, we don't know what we're dealing with. So that was the first code change that we proposed and that was passed by the board and went into effect in January. The next, we had to take a look at the purposes of zoning because since the two thousand and five update to the comprehensive plan, which is our planning bible, I hope everyone will become familiar with it. And it set, it was a community based document. It sets forth the goals and the priorities for preservation and for future development in the town and what should be protected. So subsequent to that twenty, two thousand and five update, there were many other plans that have been adopted into the comprehensive plan. There's the Climate Action Plan, there's the LWRP, there's the Affordable Housing Plan and the Coastal Assessment and Resiliency Plan. They added additional, these are all community developed documents. They added more to the goals and the visions of this town. However, the purposes of zoning, which is the definitions of what zoning should represent, did not reflect any of those plans. So the next step then would be to reflect what actually in two thousand and four, our comprehensive plan sets and put that into the goals for zoning. So the purposes of zoning, we presented it to the community and to the board and subsequently that was passed and adopted. So now we came to dimensional table. What about the dimensional table? Everyone has brought forth the same opinion, things are too big and the character of our neighborhood is being impacted, who we are as East Hampton is impacted, besides all the environmental and community impacts that large scale development has, or I call it chaotic development. And it's, and looking at the comprehensive plan and all of the plans that were subsequently adopted, it became apparent that our zoning code is not reflecting what's, what is the intention of our community. However, what I questioned is, I looked around and said, well, if you could only build a five thousand square foot house, we, we talk about whether that's too big or not, on an acre, how come I'm seeing houses advertised that are ten thousand and twelve thousand and thirteen thousand square foot on that same lot? Our dimensional table doesn't allow it. So if we change a dimensional table, what would, what, why isn't it effective now? So it's not looking to pick something that's easy. We put forth a presentation on our last go around, I think it was May seventh, if I recall, and I urge you, if you haven't seen that presentation and if you're looking at information off of social media, to take a look at that presentation and see what we saw. We saw three-story houses. We saw lots getting dug out completely. No regulation on how far you can dig out a lot, how much you can change your natural grade. No regulation on how far outside of your house foundation you can build underground. No regulation on how low you can, how many stories underground you can build. No regulations on how many, what a garage, what, if garages are counted in gross floor area. So if you can have a four thousand square foot garage, the town doesn't see it. The dimensional table today does not see it. So in order for us to have an effectual dimensional table, I felt and the members of our group felt as a whole, that we needed to close up the ways around the dimensional table to an essence, and as we called the last presentation, let's count what's being built. So that we then, when we say nothing can be bigger than thirty five hundred square foot on a half acre, that's the limit. Or whatever dimension we'll decide as a community is proper in today's world. But with having the ability to go around our code in every direction possible, up, out, what would be the point of, I asked the group, what would be the point of, of changing a dimensional table without first closing up that loopholes? And the group as a whole decided, no, we have to close up the loopholes before we go to the dimensional table. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood where we were at. Our next phase, as we did bring folks, local builders who live and work in this community for decades, a large group of them organized by Chris DiSino, we had surveyors, we had builders, Larry Kane was one of the, the folks in that group, and we had land use attorneys. And we had them come in and we found consensus on ninety nine point nine percent of the things. So I want to make sure that we're not framing people. I know it's, it's kind of today's world to say, oh, here's a good guy, here's a bad guy, we're the good guys because we only care about this, these guys are the bad guys. But I want to make sure that folks understand that there are many builders and many surveyors and many land professionals that feel the same way that we do and have contributed and are continuing to contribute to the zoning code changes. So there is no good guy, there is no bad guy. There's people that have different beliefs on private property use. And that we can argue about all day. There will, will be plenty of argument about the, about a dimensional table, what's the right house size, what's this, what's that. But until we straighten out the, until we put the foundation in, sorry, so to speak, we, we might as well just, you know, make ourselves feel good and say, okay, houses can only be three thousand square foot. Oh, we're going to be blind to the rest of what's built. So that's why we're here today. We had community feedback in our last presentation. We were concerned about hurting folks in this town that do not live in giant houses, that live in our working community, such as my town in Springs, my, my Hamlet Springs and other places, that if they need a little extra space because they had some kids and they want to put a rec room in their basement, that we're not impacting them. As the caller said, that we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, that we're not getting to hurt people who can't afford an expensive build above ground because it is cheaper to just finish your basement off. So there is a balance and what we lose sight of is the working community of this town and I never want to do that. And that's why I think a moratorium who would hurt ninety percent of the people who work in this town and putting food on their table by hammering nails and laying foundations and working in electrics that have nothing to do with the size of the houses, whose employers can go work in other towns and build giant houses. We're, we have to make sure we're not hurting the working people of this town in trying to fix something for the working people of this town. So with that, I'll, I wanted to reframe why we were putting these updates today and make sure the folks understood that it wasn't taking the easy way out. It's closing up loopholes that impact what people can build despite the dimensional table. So with that, the, this is our update. We did hear from members of the community in our last conversation and we want to make sure we're not hurting folks that have a six hundred square foot basement and want to put in a rec room and now they'll be impacted both tax wise and the ability to build anything else above ground. Also, limiting all of these other areas does impact what you're able to build above ground because right now they're not counted, they're not seen. So you can have a four thousand square foot basement, dig it out completely, so it's an entirely above ground story. This is all allowable in our code. And these are the issues that we're tackling. So thanks for letting me go on a little bit about that. So first slide, please, Charlie. And I just want to welcome Jamison McMaster, Jeremy Samson's in the back, McWilliams, I'm sorry, Jamison, Jamison McWilliams, Jeremy Samson, Charlie Collins, these are all town attorneys, Jeremy's director of planning, who, who are on our code group. I know Kevin Cooper was in the room, I can't see him, but I think he's, oh, there you are, Kevin, behind the pole, Nick Corditis, one of our, I'm probably saying your name wrong too, one of our town attorneys. And of course, our principal planner, one of our principal planners, Tyler Borasak is presenting today. And we also have members of the community. We have John Whelan, who's on our group, Jane Mearing here and Denise Savaries. And Jane and Denise are on the zoning ZBA and John is former chair of the ZBA. So Tyler, I'll, I'll kick off. So again, we'll just quickly, these are the twenty four, twenty twenty four members. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to reiterate all of the staff and thank the staff that we have for this. The hours and hours of our staff time is going into these and I really appreciate the works of all the folks that you see on this slide. Next slide. So I just wanted to reframe for everyone who did not see our first presentation, the goal is to ensure that our zoning codes are complying with the Town of East Hampton Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. So here on this slide, I took out and reiter, and reiterating from our first presentation again, the Town of East Hampton Comprehensive Plan Visions and Goal Statements. And of course, the town treasures and is committed to sustaining this rich array of natural and cultural resources, authentic sense of place, rural character and the people who make it unique. East Hampton is and will continue to be a green community, a leader in protecting the environment, saving energy and preserving open space. Future development should be harmonious with the existing character of our community. And then also on page eight, under goals, the goal, we are looking particularly to reflect the goal one, goal two, goal three and goal seven. And this has to do with our character, our environmental challenges such as groundwater and habitats, wetlands, dunes, biodiversity ecosystems, reduce the total buildout of the town to preserve the natural and cultural features and protect historic buildings, hamlets, neighborhoods, landscape and scenic vistas from incompatible development, present further law, prevent further loss of the town's cultural and archaeological resources. So that is some of the goals that we're attempting to do with this, attempting to be consistent with, with this update. Next slide. So Tyler, if you'll start, this is Tyler's forte for you that don't know. Tyler, how many years, Tyler, have you been working in our planning department?
Since two thousand nine.
So thank you.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So thanks, Tyler. And if you will just take it up from there.
Sure. So we presented in front of the board back in May. Just to give a brief rundown, a lot, some of these have changed, many of them have remained the same, but I'll go into more detail as we go along. But just to, just to address what, what was already presented, we looked at basements and that included defining basements and, and more specifically finished and unfinished portions of basements. And that's in order to look at including the finished portions of basements into the gross floor area of the residence. And we'll go into more of that in a moment, but- But we also included limiting the depth of a basement and also the footprint of that basement to keep it inside the, the footprint of the floor above it. In addition to that, we looked at garages, and that was to include attached garages into the gross floor area of the residence. Again, we're making slight changes to that. And also to, and then we talk about including those into the gross floor area, but changes have been made to that as well. In addition to that, we talked about increasing the separation of accessory structures from the principal structure from five feet, which it is now, to 10 feet, which is remaining unchanged. Adding new limitations to the height of accessory structures, I'll go into what those are later, but those have remained unchanged as well. Reducing the maximum, absolute maximum gross floor area that a house could be from 20,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Measuring the overall height of a building to the top of a railing regardless of the material. Currently, if a railing is made out of glass, the building department kind of ignores it, and it doesn't need to meet pyramid, and it doesn't need to meet maximum height. So the idea is to include it regardless of what is made out of glass or wood or whatever, to sort of put those absolute maximum limitations on, on essentially what are roof decks. Add a two-foot separation to groundwater for, for structures, swimming pools, basements, things like that, with some exceptions for non-leaching sanitary structures and pilings for foundations and things like that. Increase the railing height for roof decks from 36 inches, which it is now, to 42 inches, which would mimic the commercial code. I think it's, I think we wrote it so that it's over, if over 10 feet above the ground, that railing height would have to be a little higher. That's a safety issue that a lot of people have had concerns with. And then finally, codifying, requiring two-foot topography on surveys, so we can get a baseline of what the existing topography is on properties moving forward. It's been difficult to establish what natural grade is, so we want to try and nail down what things are, at least right now, when people come in to do buildings. And then we've also added exceptions for like flat lots and things like that that don't necessarily need it. But I'll get, I'll get into more detail on that. So what have we done since the last time we met? We met and reviewed the comments that the town board had and that the public had. We discussed possible alternatives, we came up with a bunch of different ideas, we made revisions to what, to what we thought were the biggest, you know, most controversial, if you want to call them that, made compromises in what those were to try and address the concerns that the public had and that the board had. And then after that, we met with professionals, I think you've already heard about that from Kate, to discuss what we were proposing. I think we had consensus on most of what we are, what we're presenting today, which I thought was great. So what, what did we change? Garages, as, as, to clarify, what I think a lot of people seem to have thought at the last meeting was that garages are currently counted in gross floor area. They're not. As long as I've been here, they've never been counted in gross floor area. So I, I'm not sure if that's just something that's sort of been out there in the ether, but the, it, it hasn't been done like that in a very long time, at the very least. Other than that, we looked at exempting portions of attached garages from being included in gross floor area. We also looked at exempting portions of finished basements from being included in gross floor area, and I'll go into those numbers specifically. We added something new, which was to measure maximum height from finished grade as well as looking at it from existing. We don't have exact language on that yet, we're working on that. But that's so that somebody doesn't just dig out the entire side of a foundation and it looks like a three-story building, but because the way the code's written currently, they're allowed to do that. Because it's measured from existing grade currently. So we wanted to try and address these buildings that look like three-story buildings because the basement's been dug out significantly. And so that would be measuring something from the finished grade after construction is completed. And then also added the separation between the principal from five to 10 feet, which I, we already discussed. So for attached garages, the, the main idea behind this is that as of right currently in town code, you could have a 600 square foot detached garage, as long as you meet setbacks and coverage and things like that. So the idea was to allow a person to take that 600 square foot garage, attach it to their residence and not be penalized for what's essentially the same structure just attached to one another.
And also not incentivize sprawling something out.
Absolutely, yeah.
So people would pick, if we, we felt that if we, if we did 100% of a garage, that folks would opt to push it out and maybe perhaps increase sprawl. So if you're allowed by code right now, a detached garage of maximum 600 square foot, bring that into, bring that exemption into the attached garage formula, and then count anything after the 600 square foot into GFA. So that would eliminate anything over a 600 square foot garage, being exempt from being counted. Because what we are seeing out there is five, six, seven car garages, right now you can build a thousand square foot garage, and we don't see it. The public sees it, everyone in the neighborhood sees it, but it's not seen by our code. And that was the idea, is to give the first hundred, 600 square foot, to make sure we're not just incentivizing people to push out further on their property, in, in incurring more clearing, but also count the very maximum size garages that are well over 600 square foot.
It also has the benefit of, if somebody has a conforming detached garage that's five feet away, and we say, well, now it'd be included because it's less, it'd be less than 10 if we pushed this forward, this doesn't penalize somebody for having a conforming garage that's detached, which would then be considered part of the residence. So it has an ancillary benefit in that.
Yeah, and changing that from five to 10, but you know, if I just look in the mirror, I insist I'm five foot two, but five feet is one of me. So that really essentially is still attached visually. So we wanted to make sure there was at least a separation that did make it a detached garage, which would be two of me.
And I think there's a component of safety for fire as well.
Yes, also.
As well. So that's, that's, that's ultimately what the idea was, to not, to exclude 600 square feet of an attached garage, anything beyond that would then count towards the gross floor area. So if you have an 800 square foot attached garage, 200 square feet of that will count, will be removed from your gross floor area calculations. And it's going to be very similar for basements. Basements is the same idea. If you have a finished basement, you get a 600 square foot allowance that doesn't count towards your gross floor area, and then beyond that, anything, anything extra would count at a 50% rate. So if you have 1,000 square feet, you take out your, your 600, you're left with four, and only 200 of that would then count towards your gross floor area. It's obviously a less desirable area to have a portion of your residence, but we did feel that it was still important to start including some of that into your gross floor area because that is an intensity of use on the property. Yeah. And, and we also kept the, the same, the same thing as far as limiting the basement depth to 15 feet, and limiting it to the footprint of the story above it, so we don't have what are sometimes concerned, considered iceberg houses that balloon out from the floors above it, and then also define the base, the finished and unfinished basements. So this doesn't penalize somebody who wants to have a bedroom or two down in the basement or a playroom and a bedroom or something like that. 600 square feet is a fairly sizable amount of space for somebody that needs a bedroom in the basement. So we felt that that was a fair number to include and then limiting anything beyond that at 50%. We felt it was a good compromise.
And again, that goes to housing affordability. If you need a multi-generational house, you would be able to have 600 square foot and only count half of it to be able to have an older generation and younger generation living with you in, in your house. We did want to create that balance between that type of loophole around the code by building that third, and digging out that third story, that again, is, is seen by everyone, and it, and it's not just visual impacts, right? We know the impacts of, of the excessive development on all of the resources in, in our town, as well as, as the materials that it takes to build them. So we did want to strike that balance between letting, having an affordable space for people to increase in their home, but bring it, rein in that chaotic development that was being used to have a max, where you're only allowed 3,500 square foot, build a 12,000 square foot house, according to code. And these are trends that we saw. So we made a couple of tweaks. Tyler, if you want to do height?
Sure. So for height, we, I sort of already touched upon it, but the concern was, how do we address the residences? And there are extreme cases where they'll dig out a huge portion and have an exposed foundation, which then looks like a three-story building from anybody that looks at it. So the idea was to start, or start measuring overall height of a structure, which is limited to 30 or 32 feet, depending on your zone for a pitched roof or 25 for a flat, and start looking at it from both existing grades so that you don't build it up and then build a house on top of that, and also finished grade, so you don't dig it out and have what appears to be a three-story building.
And that really has a lot to do with the further code, the further plans and our own evolution as understanding what soils are and the impacts of all this regrading and clearing, additional clearing on a property and disturbance of drainage routes and impacts to groundwater on all of the digging out. Our code now only defines natural grade, which is before construction activities. We don't have anything in our code right now that stops you from digging as far down as you'd like to go.
So, and then the rest are just have remained unchanged. We added, last time we had spoke, we talked about new maximum heights for accessory structures. Currently, accessory structures are limited to same as principal structures, so 30 or 32 feet for pitched roof, 25 for flat. We propose lowering those down, so for an accessory structure, which would be less than 600 square feet, a flat roof at 15 feet, a pitched roof at 20 feet, and then for pool houses or structures less than 200 square feet, 12 feet for flat, 15 for pitched, so even smaller roofs was for a smaller structure. And then also increasing the setback for accessory structures from five to 10 from the principal, which we already discussed. Addition to that, establishing a two-foot separation to groundwater. This has been a longstanding policy of the zoning board of appeals, when they have applications to require two-foot separation to groundwater. So we wanted to try and codify that for every lot across town, that they do have to meet that two-foot separation to groundwater. There's numerous impacts on groundwater. Also, when a basement floods, it often is just being pumped out and, and it's causing significant issues on either their property or on neighboring properties. So establishing that two-foot separation of groundwater, we thought, water we thought was easy and also unnecessary. And then the, the increase in the railing height to 42 inches for decking raised 10 feet above adjacent grade, that is a safety issue for roof, for roof decks, and it matches the commercial structure code. Next would be reducing absolute maximum gross floor area from 20,000 to 10,000 square feet. That's fairly straightforward. 20,000 square feet is a huge building. So we felt it was perfectly adequate to cut, to drop about down to 10,000 square feet. It's still a very large residence, requires a lot of energy, a lot of resources are used up in a, in a building that, of that size, a lot of sanitary effluent is possible out of a building that size. So we were comfortable dropping, dropping it by half even still.
And the reason why we did that before, we did, we wanted to set a limitation. Again, we were seeing houses that were by the dimensional code, by the dimensional table, a limitation on a house size of under 10, under 10,000 square foot, but what we were seeing was well over 10,000 square foot. And we felt that for the reasons Tyler stated, that we had justification for an immediate lowerance in this set of, of code updates before we got to the dimensional table, to at least stop that type of 12,000, 13,000, 14,000 square foot as immediately as possible before we got into the discussion of the overall dimensional table, which as some folks have called it, Larry himself, it will be the third rail conversation. So we wanted to be able to immediately regulate what we could regulate.
And then the final thing is new survey requirements for, for building permits, and that's establishing the existing grade at, at the time of the building permit. That's to establish that baseline, as I discussed, and allow for exceptions for flat lots. My lot's perfectly flat, I don't think there would be a need for, for, for showing that. And we don't want to, you know, unnecessarily burden people with, with conditions that they don't, are not, not a concern. And that would probably be up to the discretion of the building department, they can tell when they need topography or not on a property. And that's, that's it. That's, that's the, that's all the changes.
Yeah, and I'm just going to follow up with, I know my fellow board members had some questions. Tom, you wanted to know more about the science of groundwater, and I do have, and I'm happy to post this, ACI Materials Journal, a paper that was written by David W. Law and Jane Evans for a building institute, and I'll just quote this, and it says, "When concrete structures, such as pier supports, basements are placed in water, they can have a detrimental effect on the surrounding environment by causing the pH to rise. This rise in pH can harm and kill animal and plant life. The concentration of hydroxyl ions leached from the concrete can be affected by a number of factors, including cement type, shape of structure, ratio of surface area and volume, and the flow of water." The results of this paper, I'm skipping ahead, and I, well, happy to produce this for everyone, the results show that the mixture of volume, surface area, and geometry of the specimen can affect both the rate of the leaching and the cumulative number of molecules of hydro ions being leached. Also, in terms of building basements outside of foundations, you had asked a question about that. I went and asked that question of the local architects and builders group that came to us, and they spoke of uneven settling when you have an issue where you have the actual foundation of your house that supports the weight of the structure above it, whether it be one story or two stories, settling at a different rate than walls of a basement built outside of that foundation. That leads to cracking, and once again, cracking leads to water coming in, and it all becomes a health issue for the folks that live there, as well as contamination to our groundwater. Both that and waterproofing materials, which is primarily PMMA, which is a, it's, it's a fossil fuel. So any of that leaching into our groundwater by structures sitting in the groundwater does have an impact, David, Tom, and that, those were your questions?
Yeah.
David. Charlie, can you take the PowerPoint down, take the presentation down? I don't think we're going to need it at this point. On this suite of changes, David, we were talking about how much egress outside of basement egress can be. So we're looking, speaking to the folks that do this all the time, we're looking for guidance from the New York State Code, which we, we landed on 300 square foot, we could talk about that. My main goal for how much patio or how much area is outside of an egress window or a way to access a, get out of a basement, it has to do with, with safety. I wouldn't like to see something so small that only one person can go out at a time. I would like to see a lot of people be able to go out at a time. That's my primary goal on looking at egresses. Mostly, it's, it's to do with what we're seeing in that third, entire sides of houses being dug out to create a third story and that loophole in our code. But I'm certainly open to discussing natural light, particularly since we are looking at changing a definition for, for finished grade. We thought that would be a stronger way to go, as we have no definition right now for finished grade whatsoever, and calculations to finished grade. So there's a lot of grade manipulation that can happen in terms of digging down and pushing out that depth to essentially re-changing the grade on the entire property. And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. And so is Tyler and Jamison and everybody else we can drag.
I, I do. And thank you, it was an excellent presentation, I thought. Genuinely, I appreciate that, you know, you bring in that aspect of the mission statement, the CPF, and the goals to which you're relating this piece of work, because I think that's critical in how we form these changes.
Soundtrack.
You know, I, I think you also, you know, when doing that, there's the risk of being accused of being selective in which aspects you might be picking and choosing. You know, I, I looked through the other aspects. I think the fact that you very clearly call out that this is very much about the working people of the town, really addresses a lot of those pieces. So I think you've covered that, that base there as well, because I think there, there is danger that going too far could potentially be damaging to, to an important part of people's livelihood and a significant number of people's livelihood. So I do think you've covered that base. In terms of the kind of my own question, it relates mostly to one of my own committees, the ADU Committee, with the 600 square foot limitation, I would, you know, want to explore whether there would be, you know, an allowance for ADUs as there would be, you know, an allowance for ADUs as constructed to be outside of that, because if someone has a possible 1,000-square-foot basement and could convert that into an ADU, I wouldn't want to limit it to 600 square feet if it could house a two-kid family. So having that possible, you know, allowance.
Yeah, Tom, I think that's exempt, and the exemption lays already within the ADU code.
Okay.
So if you're building an ADU, I want to make that clear, affordable dwelling unit for family member or just to provide affordable housing, none of these code changes apply. Thank you for bringing that up. I left that out.
That was my only point of clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I left that out.
You look at me?
We can ban the law or whoever wants to.
So I'll just go by pages on here then, too. I'll start at...
Page numbers are small.
Page 11. Okay, unchanged amendment proposals. Height of separation of accessory structures, I think those are all appropriate. And too, as far as the height of accessory structures, I wouldn't mind actually even looking into about the limitations on the multiple accessory structures based on lot coverage also eventually. But as far as this suite right now, yes. Increased setback principal structures to five to 10 feet, I think that is actually going to be, would be very good for massing. My overall goal right now is look at the zoning code and how we can decrease massing and how it affects our communities, and specific communities that have smaller zoning in it too, or smaller lot sizes. Depth to groundwater, yes. I would like to, on the zoning board for a long time, that policy is there. I'd like to see that codified. I wouldn't even mind increasing that in areas where there might be in a flood zone or a vector flood zone where we would have to look at resiliency and increasing groundwater. Minimum railing height, I defer on that, but that sounds appropriate based on fire safety code. Maximum gross floor area, I'm not sold on decreasing it that much, but I can discuss it. We need approximately about, we need about a 4.7-acre property to be able to even get a 20,000-square-foot house, so I might want to look on that into zoning district, but I can have greater discussions on that. Survey requirements, I think this is one of the things that came out to me initially then, too. Initially, I was counter to adding that, but I understand now why that's important. But also to be able to allow the exemptions as determined by the building inspector for flat lots where there is not topography on it. I can understand that as we discuss this more then, too. And I appreciate the individuals that have discussed this with me outside of this room. Where are we? Basements, I would still like to discuss basements. I think you're getting closer to where I feel it's appropriate, but if there's a greater discussion out there about trying to decrease the overall GFA on properties, as might have been alluded to or looking at, I'd like to continue that discussion. But overall, some of those initial ones that we just discussed and might have been stated the low-hanging fruit, I don't see the why, there's not a reason, I wouldn't mind bringing that to a public hearing.
Good, David. Ian?
Yeah, so this is obviously a big, important topic, and I'm happy to be talking about it for the second time with all of you. First of all, I just want to say, I think we should be very, very careful, and a few other people have said this, about the us versus them, rich versus poor, us versus them, outsiders versus local, or whatever it is. I think that there's a real risk there, and where those lines get drawn often aren't helpful. This is a very beautiful place. We're all here for a reason. I love this place. I didn't come from here, but I sure am happy to be here. That doesn't mean there's not a lot of nice places. I don't even want to be disparaged about Nassau County or New York City or anything else. I think we can sound very quickly elitist, frankly, that, oh, everybody else can be over there, we're going to do our own thing here. And that said, it's really important for us to, you know, preserve what we have here, to keep it lovely. So I think we can do all things at once, but I just want to sort of set that, those guidelines or that sort of, you know, foundational principle. Similarly, I think when we start to question motives, oh, it's about money for you, I care about the environment, or it's about, whatever it is, don't, there's no way for any of us to tell you those aren't our motives. So let's talk about the issues. You know, as Jeremy Samuelson said last time, the question is, how big is a house? And that's kind of what we're talking about here, community character, all of those things. But when we go past that and start guessing why somebody is saying what they're saying and getting off of the core issues, we run the risk of not being able to have constructive, productive conversation. And I think that a lot of good comments have come here today. I think a lot of good comments came from sort of a different perspective last time. And there's a lot of people who frankly are afraid to speak out loud. So that's just, please honor the conversation here and also the complexity of it. So I would love to say, oh, yeah, if we just tried a little harder and did the right thing, we could get it all right right off the bat. That's almost impossible to do. So it's not that people don't care, and if we wanted it more, it's not that we would get it right in everybody's eyes. And I just think we have to appreciate the nuances, and that's the work we're here to do. Similarly, I think we're here to have a public conversation, and so people who think that this is being sprung on them, well, this is how you have public conversations. You open it up, you say what you think, you listen to others, you change your mind, and hopefully you come up with good code and solutions. Look, we want to keep this place special, beautiful. We also want to keep families here. There's a lot of competing interests, you know, density, affordable housing, something I care deeply about. Well, that's counter to, you know, intensity of use. You know, we talk about basements as an intensity of use. Well, that also may be a place, as Tom said, where we could have ADUs or solve another problem. Again, we are, it's a complicated world we live in, it's a complicated town, these problems are difficult, and it's worth spending time and thought on them. I, you know, when it comes to the basement issue, and that seems to be at the core sort of disagreement, I do think frankly, again, going back to the core issue that Jeremy highlighted last time, how big is a house? That's an important question, and I do think that we should talk about it fully. So I appreciate the very obvious problems that were highlighted last time with de facto three-story buildings where you walk out and you're by your pool and there's two stories above you. That doesn't seem right. And so I think that, you know, the low hanging fruit, closing loopholes that Kate talks about are great, and I think we had 80, 90% agreement from all sides on that. I think it gets a little bit trickier when we start talking about whether basements count towards GFA or not. As some people highlighted before, that's the most sustainable place to build, while it does intensify the use of properties in some cases. It also doesn't really destroy community character as much as above-ground development because of the mass issue that David talked about and so many of us have throughout this conversation. So I do believe it would be worth, in the next iteration, at least talking about the dimensional table. I'm not saying that I'm in favor of reducing house sizes or, I don't know, I haven't looked at that closely enough, but I think if we're worried about community character, worried about massing, let's talk about it. I don't think we should be shy about that. Similarly, again, I think basements, as I said, are the most sustainable place to build from an energy use standpoint. I don't think it's unreasonable to count maybe a portion of those towards GFA. I also know there's strong opinions on the other side of that, and maybe it's worth us not counting that. So we encourage that type of development for, to minimize massing above. If we do that in concert with, you know, changing the dimensional table, perhaps we have houses that look smaller but serve the same needs. And again, these are preliminary comments. I have not done all of that work. I don't sit in these committee meetings, so, you know, I'm sort of, please allow me to be wrong. And again, just contributing to the conversation here. Again, I think with ADUs, affordable housing is really a passion of mine, and we're going to talk about that after this today. I think with the accessory structure height, my instinct was to be fully on board with that, but then I start to think, wait a minute, if it's 15 or 20 feet, do we have room for an ADU above a garage? And I don't know.
You had talked about exempting ADUs from that.
It would be exempt?
Yeah.
An ADU?
Well, I understand, but, so you have an ADU, and then it no longer is an ADU, so you're allowed to build a garage that's 20 feet or 25 feet to house an ADU, then you no longer maintain it as an ADU. Where does that put your garage?
I mean, the garage would have to be demolished at that point, because it'd be 1,200 square feet. If you had a 600-square-foot garage and put a 600-square-foot ADU above it, and you got rid of the ADU, it'd be a non-conforming building.
So probably workable. I guess what I'm saying, and again, I understand the accessory structure lowering the height, but I think we might preclude people from being able to add an ADU later if they're not doing it intentionally, or scare them away from doing it if they would then have to demolish their whole garage because they had a, you know, a parent who was going to live upstairs for however long they, you know, they did and didn't want to rent to a stranger or something like that. So again, I think that these are, these are all, you know, good concepts thrown out there. I'm not trying to poke holes in anything. I just think we should appreciate the complexity here. And, you know, I think we can also have, you know, I spoke earlier when I started about trying not, well, frankly, to sound selfish, or, you know, closed off from people, but I think we can focus on the greater good here and also have empathy for individuals. You know, what, just because, you know, there's a lot of focus on my neighborhood here or this here, I think we should look at the big picture, but also appreciate, you know, the local family who's trying to keep their kids here or whatever. And I think we just, again, need to be careful and sort of holistic about this argument, focusing on the greater good, but with plenty of empathy for individuals in specific situations. That's basically what I have, my initial thoughts, and I think there's a lot more conversation to have here, I think, to the general approach. I appreciate what Kate said about trying to sort of close loopholes and do what we know we can do. I would like to talk about everything, because I do think above-ground house size, you know, is related to below-ground use and all of those things. That doesn't mean I think we should wait to get it perfect. I think that we should close the loopholes we've all identified as quickly as possible and then keep chipping away at it. So everybody who thinks that we're just going to snap our fingers and figure this all out, I'm going to disappoint you, because I don't think that I'm going to be able to do that. But I'm certainly going to try, and I think we can do what we can now, and then we can keep doing our best to continue to do better. A couple of last other things, the two-foot contour lines, I think David Lee's brought this up, and Tyler, you spoke about it. I understand the need, because we're trying to prevent a problem in sort of these large developments. I share Kate's concern, David's concern, Tom's concern about regular people. I want to be a regular town where regular people can live. I don't have any problem with rich people enjoying it either, but I don't want to start making regulations and stacking regulations to prevent the worst of developmental abuse while, that then preclude regular people from doing regular things. And so those exceptions are going to be really, really important to me. You know, somebody having to spend thousands of dollars more on a survey where that land is obviously flat and at zero risk of being taken advantage of, I don't want to let that happen. And I've worked for the town for a long time in a different capacity. I'm new in this role, but there have been many situations where we've said, yeah, that doesn't make much sense, but it's what it says, we have to do it. And when I was on the planning board, I was a very literal person. I thought the code was the code. My job wasn't to write new code, it was to interpret it. And there were plenty of cases where what we had to do didn't make common sense. And that's what happens sometimes when you stack regulations on top of each other, not that we don't need them to make sure that we preserve our community and, you know, meet our environmental goals and all of that. But I just want to be very, very careful in that process, not just to restrict what shouldn't happen, but to encourage and allow regular things to be allowed that always happen and always should be. So I'm sure I missed some points there. Hopefully, we can talk a lot more about this, but that's what I think for now.
Great. So I just want to thank the zoning code amendments work group. You know, you've taken a very methodical approach. You started with a certificate of, the C of O, certificate of occupancy legislation, closed that loophole. You reworked and did a major overhaul on the purposes of zoning, and now we're at a point where we're looking to close the loopholes before we have the next discussion about, you know, how big is a house, right? So I'm supportive of what was presented here today. I do, you know, to Ian's point about the issue raised about the garage, I think that there's something that we need to take a look at. You know, I could build a garage and then decide my daughter needs to move in, and now my roof is too low and she can't have a second floor, you know, second-story apartment there. So that, I think, needs to be reworked through. But I would like to see, I mean, obviously, we're going to hear from the community again. We held, some folks held back, want to speak now, but from my perspective, I think the next step is to have these recommendations, the ones that we all agree on, translated into code so that we can bring that back to a work session and really kind of go through it and see. As Ian says, sometimes when you stack code on top of code, you want to make sure that we're landing where we think we are. So that's my thought process. Now, if anybody else wants to say?
Yeah, I just, just one other important thing, I think Kate emphasized, is that this is not a static moment, right? These are the first round recommendations we're looking at. There's other things, I mean, I know a lot of people have an issue with driveways, you know, gravel driveways, which can now occupy a huge amount of land, but, you know, ecologically are somewhat dead. They do have some water filtration, but, you know, is that something we want to look at? So there's a lot of, I think, additional stuff that we can bring forward, and, you know, I recommend contacting the council person as such.
Yes, Tom, there, for me also, I'll just, one of my wish lists to get to fairly quickly is the Natural Resources Special Permit and the lack of codifying some of the very important elements of protecting our natural resources. That was one on the zoning board. When I was on the zoning board for nine years, that was one that, you know, always bothered me, was that our Natural Resources Special Permit Code. So there is a lot of work to do. Codes are almost like living things. They constantly need to be revised and changed. And I really appreciate everyone's input, both from the community and from everyone on the board. I very much appreciate your comments, Ian, about how we talk to each other about these important issues. I think that's something we probably need to be reminded on, on every issue that we talk about these days in these times, but I definitely appreciate that. And I want to thank everyone for their input, because this is how it becomes a community effort and a community document. So are there more folks that are going to call up?
Yeah. So Martha, you were signed up. Welcome, Martha.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Martha Kreisel, and I'm on the Concerned Citizens of Montauk Executive Committee. I've been involved with CCOM on its board since 2007. I'm a semi-retired municipal attorney. I did decades of work with villages, counties, and planning commissions, including the Nassau County Planning Commission. And believe me when I tell you, I fully understand staff limitations, timelines, and everything. I really do know how difficult it is. We've already submitted a full written comment. We emailed it over yesterday afternoon. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because I want to react a little bit to the presentation that I thought was really, really excellent. And I thank the staff for their comprehensive work, and Kate in particular, for taking the time to really walk us through it step by step with your own views, which is really important. I wanted to leave here with a to-do list, and I am leaving here with a to-do list, and I really appreciate that. I'll be working with the CCOM Executive Committee and Board. As most of you know, one of our principal missions includes promoting sustainability through environmentally responsible land practices, and as part of our environmental watchdog legacy, we continue to monitor the regulation of development proposals, but those that impact the environment specifically. And we'll be studying them and weighing in on them, and, you know, Jeremy is always very available to us, and we really appreciate that as well. So we're at this meeting today because we really, you know, we're here in person, we're here remotely, we really want to understand the next steps and recommendation. We share everybody's concern, including what everybody up here has said about the timetable. We know it's hard, we know it can't be rushed, but I will tell you that, don't feel like when you do vote on amendments, they're written in stone, it's an evergreen process. It's an expensive process. You don't want to do legal notices for nothing, you don't want to publish for nothing, but you don't have to feel like if you make a mistake, because you never really know until the applications come in. That's my experience in the decades that I did this work. So, you know, just in reviewing the amendments, we also review information from institutions and organizations and advocates, including the Group for the East End, the Goblow Laboratory, and of course, Build-in-Kind. And we emphasize also the need for robust and timely secret review. I believe firmly you cannot begin your secret review too early, even though other people say, no, it doesn't really have to be prepared until you get closer to the hearings. I don't agree with that. I think you should be working on that constantly. And the importance of that is that you're addressing in your code work specific environmental concerns and not what the courts have called generalized community concerns, which the courts don't like. They like specific scientific concerns, and I think that's really important. So we want to be sure that zoning amendment criteria are science-based. You know, we want to encourage the town to be as inclusive as possible. I'm very happy, I don't know how you all felt when you... as inclusive as possible. I'm very happy. I don't know how you all felt when you walked in, but I'm really happy to see a full room, standing room only, and also to hear a longstanding architect and builders get up and say, you know, we're, we're willing to work on this and everything else. Because otherwise, you get to the public hearing itself and new issues are raised and that buys you a big fat adjournment. And that's the last thing we want to do at this point. I don't think I agree with what everybody said. This is, don't be defensive here. It's not, it's a collaboration. It's got to be a collaboration. I heard all the catch, the catchphrases. It's better to do too much than too little. Um, you know, don't, you know, and, and I agree with all of that, but let's just get working. Let's just, um, um, get as much work done as quickly as possible. And thank you again for, uh, doing all this work. I appreciate it. CCOM appreciates it.
Thank you Martha. Lou Cortese?
Thank you. Thank you, Board for doing this. It's a topic that I feel very strongly about. Kate, I really appreciate your comments. I think they're smart. They're intelligent. And I understand the hard work that, uh, the committee has, the work group has. So I just implore you to please push on despite the difficulties. Um, so my comments are not so much a critique as they are, just expressing my opinion that hopefully you'll take into consideration as you work through this. I've witnessed firsthand, and you could say I've been a victim of, in my immediate neighborhood, the dispoilment of the open space adjacent to the iconic Ditch Plains Beach. A four acre parcel is being developed with airline terminal sized houses going up in each of the one acre lots. This oversized aberration on an iconic scenic landscape is a direct blasphemous stain on the goals of our comprehensive plan. Preserving open space, authentic sense of place, rural character, and the continuance of a green community, not to mention a protection of the environment. These four homes are not the only oversized structures being built at Ditch. The entire area was developed prior to zoning, limiting lot sizes to 20,000 square feet. In effect, the entire Ditch Plains neighborhood is overdeveloped and grandfathered in as such. The effects of this tight density are manifesting themselves in severe environmental degradation. The excessive septic flow drainage systems and destruction of wetlands is causing late Montauk to confluence of the septic and rainwater outflow to become polluted. Areas that were once utilized as swimming spots are now dangerous and off limits. None of this is stopping developers from knocking down quaint cottages on postage-sized stamp lots, postage-stamp lots, and may, and maximizing the house size and lot coverage with hard surfaces with higher intensive use. They can do this because the house size formula enables it. The recommendation by the zoning code amendments working group to include portions of a basement in the GFA does nothing to stem the Ditch Plains area oversized houses being built because most houses in Ditch are built on slab or, or have only a crawl space. And it's not only Ditch Plains. There are many other neighborhoods in East Hampton with a similar situation. Tweaking the code by adding basements and garages to the house GFA will not, in my opinion, meet the goals as stated by the zoning code working group to ensure, which is to ensure our zoning codes are complying with the town's comprehensive plan and the newly adopted section 255-1-11, the purposes of zoning. The recommendations being proffered to amend the zoning code with the intent of meeting those stated goals remind me of the effects of the complexity of the country's income tax code. It has led to layers upon layers of complex rules prompting taxpayers to invent complex loopholes to skirt the new rules. The basements and garages GFA inclusions is tweaking around the edges, albeit I understand necessary. I'm afraid as currently proposed, it adds complexity. Fifty percent of the basements are exempt, except the first 600 feet, except unfinished basements or portions thereof with a depth limit of 15 feet and no more than the footprint of the house except the egress. This will lead to developers inventing ways to circumvent the new rules and worse yet, they won't solve the problem. But after hearing today's discussion, I understand that you need to close these loopholes. So I take back a little bit of what I said.
Thank you. Lou, we're going to ask you to wrap up.
But I want to emphasize, and I'm, and this is the last thing I want to say. I want to emphasize that the primary solution in my eyes is simple, direct, effective, and inviolable. Change the formula that determines allowable GFA. My suggestion and my wish is to have the GFA formula be changed to reduce house size maximums on an average of about a third. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you Lou.
Good afternoon. Michael Frank. I'm at Gansett. Um, I'm a builder out here. Built about a dozen houses in the last 10 years. So certainly I agree with everyone here that the code change, the zoning code needs to change. But, uh, one thing I want to specifically talk about, I think the basement square footage GFA, um, including that or any of that's not a good solution. Under the proposal, the revised proposal that was put up today, someone could, let's take that half acre 20,000 square foot lot. Uh, right now the code is 3,600 square feet above ground. Someone here could still build 3,600 square feet above ground, do a 600 square foot finished basement, and do a 600 square foot garage and nothing has changed. Um, and likely that person will, you know, finish, um, without a building permit, the rest of the basement. So I really think that that's, um, a bad idea in terms of including square footage from basement. And then this hyper-focus on GFA, uh, with the basement, um, have, there are other provisions of the zoning code that could be modified that would curtail mass and scale that are being overlooked. For example, in the B-zone with say a hundred foot width lot, it is a very generous principle front yard setback of only 20 feet and side setbacks of 15 feet on each side. So even with passings that today propose new zoning code, someone could still build a very wide 70-foot white house only 20 feet from the street. So changing the front yard setback to say 35 feet and doing a combined side setback formula similar to what Southampton does of say 40 feet would result in a house only 60 feet wide, a 15% reduction in scale, and 35 feet from the street, which would be 60% further back from the street. This would drastically impact mass and scale without drastically impacting home values. Um, lastly, and this gentleman just mentioned, and today's proposed GFA revisions have zero consequences, consequences on homes in the flood plain, which basements aren't allowed. So homeowners in the dunes, beachhampton and other waterfront areas, some of which, some of which who are the most vocal, see very little impact from these GFA proposed revisions and could pretty much continue on as is while their neighbors a few blocks away could see their buildable options turned upside down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Rich?
Welcome Rich.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back again today.
Okay. Members of the town board, Supervisor Brooke Gonzalez, thank you for providing me time to speak. I appreciate everything I've heard today and obviously a lot of work that's taking place already. Uh, my name is Rich Silver. I should mention that while I'm a CCOM board member, I'm making this statement as an individual. Um, I've been a full-time resident in Montauk for 13 years and, and a homeowner for nearly 25 years. Um, despite all these years out east, it's only in the last five to 10 years that I've witnessed a dramatic change in the landscape of already developed parts of the town, specifically a sharp increase in the number of older homes being torn down and replaced by significantly larger ones. There's a lot that's already been said today, but I just want to add a few comments. With this change, I also began to learn more about the potential and real environmental implications of the new and significantly larger homes being built. In many cases on very modest sized parcels of land, indisputable is the fact that a significantly larger home on a small land parcel inherently represents more intensive land use. I don't think anyone could argue with that. With the widely accepted expectation of sea level rise that raises questions about future environmental implications of expanded development, particularly in areas of low depth to groundwater, Montauk being particularly vulnerable. Additionally, development in the context of sea level rise and more intensive weather events can undermine flood resilience. Despite new improved septic systems and more energy efficient heating and cooling, less clear is the cases of the significantly larger houses is whether resource usage still outpaces that of older homes, given the magnitude of scive difference between certain new and older homes. I also learned about the town of East Hampton's comprehensive plan over the last few years and how the scale of much of the recent construction, which is completely within the allowances of the current zoning code, doesn't appear to be consistent with the vision statement. A lot of, obviously has already been said. I commend the town of East Hampton for having committed to doing the challenging work in comprehensively amending the town zoning code, beginning with the formation of the work group and then all the work that's been done to date that's led to the current recommendations. Um, I'm encouraged by the work group's most recent recommendation to clarify what should be included in defining a baseline for house size with a focus on inclusion of the basement correct, attached garages. Neither of which are included in the current code. All that said, the most important potential change to the zoning code from what I've learned would be a meaningful reduction in the maximum house size formula. And that has yet to be included, obviously, in any recommendations nor discussed as to when it might be addressed. I'll just end my remarks by saying that I strongly hope that this last consideration will be addressed by the work group and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Sir, come on up.
I'm not dressed for the occasion.
Nice shirt.
My name is Mark Cardone. I represent myself. I build homes in town. Um, I, I, the last meeting, I'm just going to reiterate what I had said, is that the best tool that you guys have is to allow that basement to be built out. Because we're looking at specific things rather than the entire projection of all the construction. Okay? And, um, the gentleman before me brought, brought up a good point about the houses on the water, the basement has no effect. That's absolutely true. Okay? But if 70% of the houses are not multimillionaire people, they're people that can afford a house, and you're able to put more space in the basement, that is the best single way to reduce the size of the structure. Okay? If they, if they require a certain amount of square footage, and let's, let's just use a number, it's 4,000 feet. And you can convince them to do 1,500 feet in a basement, that already has reduced the size of the house. And I have done that over and over and over again. Okay? That's, that's, so that is definitely your best tool. Uh, the second thing is as far as the topo maps, which you, you were discussing. By the way, all of you are excellent. You're, you're very clear in everything you say. I walk out of here understanding exactly what everybody's thinking, which is, I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay? Um, but anyway, uh, getting back to the topo, okay? The way that that would trigger, I think you could put a mechanism in because there, on every survey, they always show the elevation stakes at the corners of the survey. If you see an elevation of more than 15 foot, a, a change, that should trigger back and say, look, I got to see a topo of this thing. Okay? That, that should be an automatic trigger. Okay? On the other hand, if you see there's, you know, a one foot differential, you know, you have a level, a level, uh, piece of property. It's not an issue. Okay? Third thing I'd like to say is that, um, when, when we have grade changes in a property, you're absolutely correct in saying the new space should be counted from the grade you created. Okay? That's absolutely correct. However, if you say you had a property that was left to right, it was, the grade was off left to right, you have to follow that with the structure. So, so what's happening is you're getting a structure that goes like this and a grade that goes like this. And the result is a two-floor structure here, a three-floor structure here. Okay? The way to do that, this has to go down. Because you've created the new grade. So if you're 30 feet here and over here you created the new grade, you can only be 30 feet here. That has to change. So whatever, you know, if you, and, and this is, this is, happens all the time. And, and, you know, once again, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm an old dog. I've been at this a long time. You know what I mean? And, um, to be, and I'm going to be, yeah, I don't know if I'm putting this the right way, but to be totally honest with you, uh, we call it slim pickings. Okay? The lots out there, there aren't that perfect, beautiful level lot out there anymore, right? Uh, those have all been purchased and they've been developed. And now we're getting into, uh, lots that have grade issues. Okay? I will tell you something that I do. Okay? And, um, all, all these people here are right to have, have, have issues with all this stuff. I never, my, my neighbors where I built, they invite me to barbecues. Okay? Just so you know. And I, I bring them, what I do is if I have something questionable, I know it. I've been doing this a long time. So what I do is I will get renderings of what I'm intending to build. When I have a neighbor come out, hold on, I pull up my phone, bing, 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 that's what I'm building. How can I make it better for you? Okay? And they can see it from the rendering, especially with the questionable lots. Okay? Uh, because like I'm saying, the roof should fall down. I do that all the time. I always bring my roof lines down. I don't try to have, I don't want the McMansion. Okay? Um, and another thing that is an easy thing to do, and I've done it for many, many years, is to not have the McMansion. It's architecturally, if you bring the roof lines down to the first story and build everything under the roof, pop out dormers and such, I have, everyone walks into my houses and they can't believe what they see inside is, is what they saw outside. And there's a way of doing that. It's, it's, it's done architecturally. You just carry the rafters down, bring the roof lines down, pop out the rooms. I have people walk into the houses and they're like, whoa, I, I didn't even think this was in here. Because, and, and it's all by technique. All of these things can all be done. Everyone here can be satisfied. I can continue, I, I got into this business to feed my children. Now my children are in my business. And, uh, you know, that's where, the way, where it went. And, uh, so, so we're, we want to continue, but we want to do it right. I want to go to the neighbor's barbecue. Okay? But believe me, I'm telling you, the basement space, yes, the unlimited budget is going to abuse it. Guaranteed. Someone who could build a $50 million house, they're going to say, I want it all. I want every single foot I can get. I want all the basement. I want everything. Okay? But there aren't that many of those people. There are a lot of people that fall in between that. And I will have that conversation with them. What do you need? What's, how much square footage do you need? And I will suggest to them, what's your budget? Okay, well, we can give you that, but we can't give it to you out of the ground. Let's put it in the basement. I'll make it nice. I'll make the basement 10 foot high so the duck work is hidden in the sheetrock. It'll be beautiful. Give you a couple of egress windows. And I do it all the time. And, you know, once again, to, to get to one last point, as far as, um, the, uh, the things environmentally, okay? We are using, all using the new septic systems. The septic systems in my The septic systems in my new houses that Suffolk County is requiring me to use are far better than all your septic systems, far better for the environment, okay? That's number one. Number two, anytime I put something in the ground, I basically put a dehumidifier down there. I don't need air conditioning, nor heat, because the heat will fall down there, the air conditioning won't come on. The dehumidifier takes the humidity out, the humidity out, and that's it, and it's a very comfortable space. So it's very energy efficient, environmentally friendly again, okay? And the other thing is, which nobody mentioned, is we have existing clearing limits, they do exist, okay? And every single builder that builds a house should have on their survey, that they, when they submit their plot plan, it should have clearing stakes on that, okay? And when they, when the inspectors come at the end for the last inspection, they should say, "Do not pull those stakes out, leave them in the ground. When I come for the final inspection, pull the stakes out." And that's how you'll know. And we do that all the time, we put silk fences around, we follow it all around, and we work within there. And believe me, it can be very difficult. There are issues sometimes where machines are a grade, and it becomes an issue, and you go into that. Well, you know what? If we did that, punish us. You know, we can explain it away, we can say the machine was going to fall into the hole, we had to go out, punish us, make us pay a fine. That's fair, we're good with that, okay? And, but I do agree with Mr. Kane, that I believe everything can be worked out. I think that what you do, like I said before, you're all excellent. I feel like you all explained yourself perfectly, and I think everyone in this room knows exactly what the goals are. But just keep in mind that, you know, there are ways to work around it and get everybody on the same page as well, okay?
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to address the board, or we're going to move into affordable housing? Okay. Eric, you're up.
Hello, everyone, I'm Eric Schantz, I'm the Director of Housing. I believe the first matter is the EAF for the proposed code change for only senior affordable housing units, to change the permitted density from eight units per acre to 12. My department prepared an EAF's Part Two and Three for you. A negative declaration is recommended. As you remember, there was a presentation on this and a discussion, I believe about a month and a half ago. So the next step is to make a secret declaration. Again, we recommend a negative declaration. I also wanted to let you know that the Planning Board discussed this last week. They sent their written comments to the Town Board. I suppose the bottom line with those is that they're in support of the code change. So provided you're okay with the secret document, then the next step would be to route this to the Suffolk County Planning Commission to get their comments, and then also simultaneously schedule a public hearing.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Eric after reviewing the EAF?
No, I'm good.
This is mine, that's not filled in.
It's just that section.
Okay.
No, no, I think he covered all the locations. I gotta stand up.
Yeah, I'm certainly, I'm certainly in favor, you know, I've talked a lot with Eric about this issue. I watched the Planning Department, or the Planning Board's discussion of the matter, and they were fully supportive, and even suggested that we look at this type of density for other things. As a board, you know, we decided to look at senior housing as a separate thing, the Health Department treats it separately, I think it was fully appropriate to look at this as its own piece of legislation, and I, I'll wait for discussion here, but I'm going to move for a negative declaration, and I look forward to moving this to public hearing.
I have no further comments, I agree with the assessment and the Planning Board's recommendations, and how Ian has summarized it.
So I'd like to make a motion for a negative declaration.
Oh, we don't, we don't have a, we don't, we'll do that by board resolution Thursday night?
The process is, we have to do a resolution.
We have to do a resolution.
Written resolution, that will be.
Yeah, and I'm sorry about that, that's a little bit of me conflating procedure of other boards with the Town Board, but yes, we'll prepare a resolution.
Well, I'm right there with you, Eric.
All right, so that's, matter is settled. So we can do, we'll do the negative declaration, and then we send it off to the Suffolk Planning Commission in that order? Beautiful.
Yeah, and I'll handle, my department will handle all the routing and referral. So, and we'll obviously make you aware of any comments that the Planning Commission offers.
Okay, so you just need to make sure that the Planning Department knows that you're doing the routing on their behalf.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to Jeremy about it.
Okay, beautiful.
We already have, actually.
Okay, so now, next up is, no, we're not going to take comments right now, we're going to let Eric make his presentation. And that's the employer-sponsored affordable housing development proposal. You can pull that PowerPoint up, please.
Okay. So this is a concept that's been introduced, there's been various names for it, or ideas of what to call it, but I believe, you know, and you'll hear throughout this presentation that this is a preliminary discussion, I think this is the most descriptive of what we're looking to do. But let me just try to get you the full screen here.
Here we go.
So, basically, you know, we were just talking about one of them, the Town Board's been considering numerous changes to the Town Code to promote affordable housing. Like I say, one of them we were just discussing is the housing density for senior affordable housing developments. Another thing, recently, the Town Board overhauled a lot of the regulations regarding ADUs, as well as clarifying their definition. But basically, all the affordable housing that we have in the town, most of it, almost all of it, has been public only, or a public-private partnership, leading to its creation, whether it be funding or planning the project. We have few existing affordable housing units that were funded entirely privately, and I should make a point here that that's the third main bullet point, says that we funded and built privately, it should say that were funded and built privately, it makes a difference there. But, so anyway, we're open to considering mechanisms adding or changing within the Town Code that would create affordable housing, by basically giving the private sector options to develop housing, and complement the more traditional types of affordable housing developments. So this is just about the need for seasonal and year-round employee housing. It's identified in the comprehensive plan and in the Community Housing Fund Project Plan, or the Housing Plan. Nearly all local businesses are finding it increasingly harder to find and keep qualified workers. Housing cost burdens have made it difficult for essential workers, however you may come to define that, but more so emergency services personnel, who absolutely are necessary to a healthy community, to remain in East Hampton. And everybody knows about the trade parade, you know, if these doors weren't closed, you could see it right now. Traffic's already causing significant delays on mainly Montauk Highway, and a big part of that is the fact that people that work here can't afford to live here, so they must commute. So, basically, housing and planning, we've been discussing how to create a mechanism in the code for employee housing, whether it be private-public partnership, public, but with an eye on giving an option for private development of such a development. My office took the lead in crafting and drafting some code, certainly not finalized, that's really the point of discussion here today, is to look into the basic aspects of it, and critique, and improve it. The general concept was brought by a private developer who's looking to build housing that is for employees of employers within the town. I just want to make that point, and sort of give that credit, that that's what, you know, sort of how to start looking at this, and we've been working with them, and inquiring with other municipalities to try and craft this. So, basically, the general concept here, though, is to provide a mechanism within the Town Code for local businesses within the town of East Hampton, to house their employees in multi-unit developments, where those employers own the individual units, which could be condominiums or apartments. As such, this is at its core an attempt to provide an avenue for private development of a needed form of affordable housing, and that basically is the goal here, is just to provide additional seasonal and year-round housing opportunities for the workforce of the town. So, this slide here, actually, I regret, as I was going over this presentation, I really should have had a second sort of column on the bottom there, on the right-hand side, because what I'm talking about here now is that we drafted, you know, created some draft code provisions, again, this is very preliminary, but what we did was, we started with the existing affordable housing development as a defined use in the Town Code, and then through discussions, tried to keep as much of that as possible, and work off of that, but change it as would be needed. So what you see there in bullet points listed are the differences between a traditional affordable housing development and this employer-sponsored affordable housing development, possible, proposed, potential new use. So what you see there, so this is a little misleading, and I go through it more in later slides, but it makes it look there where, you know, I kind of say, "We started with an affordable housing development, and then we changed all of these things," and then you kind of say, "Well, what did you leave the same?" So I really should have had a column here that lists things that are, that remain the same, but just very quickly, because again, I go over this. We removed the income restrictions, I'll explain why. Ownership structure is a little bit different, the tenant restrictions are a little bit different, maximum permitted density, which is going to be a key part of this, the management and enforcement that would be necessary as a privately owned development, and lease terms, because again, we wanted to also provide for seasonal workers, and right now, an affordable housing development is only permitted to be, those units permitted to be rented year-round. So, if you can, try and envision, you know, sort of a comparable column there, that are things that are the same, again, going to go into this, but the main point, the most important thing that remains the same between this and a traditional affordable housing development, is the rent restriction. We're proposing to keep it at 130% of fair market rent. That is what keeps this within the definition of an affordable housing unit, or as affordable housing. When you look in the code, that's sort of the, and it makes sense, that's sort of the key operating thing, is that this is a unit that is affordable to somebody based on the current market rate. So, the rent restriction would remain, it would be the same for both. Maybe more importantly, all dimensional regulations, with the exception of the density provision that I'll get into, but all the density, all the dimensional regulations remain the same. So that includes setbacks, building in total lot coverage, minimum lot area, so right now under the Town Code, you need three acres roughly to qualify for, to build an affordable housing development, it would be the same that we're proposing right now for that. The maximum number of units on any individual site is 60, we're not proposing to change that for this potential new use. And then also, the unit size is dictated in the code, it's 400 square feet to 1,200 square feet, and the number of bedrooms is capped at three, we're not proposing to change any of that. And then another thing that is also the same here is that this would require, as with most new uses, but this would require any applicant to go in front of the Planning Board and obtain site plan approval and special permit approval, and then actually, perhaps an additional special permit regarding that density bonus, but again, I'll get into that in a second. This is more, this is a table that basically shows you a breakdown of the differences, so none of those things that remain the same, with the exception of that second row there, which is the rent restriction, which would stay the same. But I'm going to go through all these in the following slides in more detail, but this basically gives you a breakdown of everything that's different with this proposed new use compared to an affordable housing development. So basically, you have there the income restriction, right now, with a traditional affordable housing development, the tenant cannot make more than 130% of the area median income. With the employer sponsored, we're proposing no restriction, again, I'll get into that, give you a specific example pretty soon. Skipping over the rent restriction, which would stay the same, the maximum permitted density for an affordable housing development is eight units per acre. This, as we drafted it for this new use, has a provision that would allow you to go up to 12 units per acre, with an additional special approval from the Planning Board, with special, specific conditions that have to be met. The ownership structure is a little bit different, you know, traditionally, you have a development that's owned by the East Hampton Housing Authority, or Windmill, or something like that. In this case, what we're looking to create is something that, well, what we're envisioning is a development where the units are condoed out, so that an employer within the town can buy that unit and then house their employee directly in there, so it's a little bit of a different ownership situation. And then the tenant restrictions are, and this is a little redundant on that row, with the first row, which is the income qualification, but that's basically what that means when it says must be moderate income family, a moderate income family is designed as somebody, a household that's making 130% of area median income or less. In this case, since this is supposed to be for employees, the only restriction would be that, and again, subject to discussion and change, but that a tenant must be, must be employed by the business that owns that specific unit, or both reside and be employed within the town of East Hampton. So we're looking for somebody who works directly for one of those businesses that do business in the town, or somebody that doesn't necessarily work for the business that owns the unit, but does work and live in the town. Another thing is continuing compliance and review. Existing affordable housing developments, again, because they are established sort of under the watch and management of a public housing agency, there isn't really a need for government oversight, but if this is going to be a truly and totally private development, then you want to have some provision where we're checking to make sure that the unit owners are businesses that are within the town, and that those tenants are people that are employed within the town. I don't think there's a way around that, other than requiring a permit from the town of East Hampton, at the very least on an annual basis, and also when ownership or tenancy changes. The only other main change here would be the lease term. We're looking to provide an opportunity for seasonal workers to also have housing, so obviously, if you stick with the existing restriction for an affordable housing development that's year-round, you're not going to provide for that, so.
So, Eric, we also talked about, I forwarded an email from Rob, that, where we have the lease term, where, you know, you get 30 days after you're terminated, if you're terminated from the employer, that we can't go around landlord-tenant laws.
Yes.
So we have to expressly state in the local law that tenancy terminations must comply with real property actions and proceedings law.
And it's a great point, and a, you know, needed change. I will say, I base this off of my understanding of that, the amount of time after, you know, so the 30 days came from those provisions, but it's a lot cleaner and a lot more accurate to just have it, you know, phrase it in that way. So anyway, so now I'm going to get into some of the specific, you know, regulations, and really their special permit standards that we're proposing in this draft. Again, all of these are open to discussion, but, you know, we sort of took that task of trying to come up with an alternative use, very similar to a traditional affordable housing development that would allow for employee housing of this type. So, basically, what you see here is a comparison, and you'll see this in the following slides, a comparison of affordable housing development and what it requires on the left, and then on the right, what we've drafted for employer-sponsored affordable housing development. So, you'll see basically these two provisions here, which basically says what site you can locate either of these uses on are identical. This is really important, and those key criteria are that it must be in the affordable housing overlay district, and that it must have a minimum lot area of roughly three acres. And really, when you look at that, and you'll see on the left, on the bottom, on the left-hand side there, really, not really, but right now, there are only two properties in the town that meet that qualification, you know, and are vacant, and could otherwise be built on. That's 350 Panago Road and 439 Main Street in Amagansett, and then basically, there's a little arrow there and a little sketch, that's coming right from the Hamlet Study for East Hampton, actually, for this stretch of town here, along Panago Road. of town here along Panago Road where it envisions that the property at 350 Panago Road being developed for some form of affordable housing. So this is consistent with the Hamlet Plan, although obviously, you know, we hadn't had these discussions about this potential alternative type of use when that was crafted. But just basically trying to give you a heads up that if we do draft this, as we sit here today with the limited number of properties that have the AHO designation, the scope of this use is going to be limited and the reach is going to be limited in terms of the fact that there's really only two sites where this could be done. So this is what I was getting at before with things that are the same and almost all of the dimensional regulations. I won't read them all verbatim and I just said each one of them, you know, maximum number of units on a site, maximum number of bedroom, size of the unit, the setbacks, the coverage, all that stuff is the same. The only difference here is that we're proposing in this initial stage here to permit a density bonus above eight units per acre, which is what is the maximum permitted for an affordable housing development right now. Now, taking just a step back to the last agenda topic of the senior housing density, we are moving forward with a proposal to permit senior, only senior affordable housing development units to have, to be permitted otherwise to go up to 12 units per acre. This is similar in the sense that we're saying, okay, well, with this use, they can also go up to 12 units per acre, but we're adding a number of special restrictions and, you know, aspects of a specific proposal that might come in and request more than eight units per acre, a whole bunch of additional special permit standards that they would have to meet. So this slide details those, but basically also gives you that introduction to the fact that any of these are going to be in front of the planning board, they're going to be in there for site plan, special permit review anyway. And basically, what we're proposing here in this draft code is to give an added restriction and require an additional special permit if a developer of one of these, you know, proposed types of affordable housing developments is going to go above eight units. And that's mandatory sewage treatment, performing a traffic study, which is standard with most affordable housing developments already, but it is not a code mandated requirement. Additional things that could be included in there, because traffic studies usually review, the main parts of them are intersection capacity analysis and then level of service on adjacent intersections and roadways. Level of services, you've heard this term before, but it's basically like a letter grade of an A is a road that's great, a road that's failing is an F or an E down by the bottom. So you could also have restrictions built in there that say you must do a traffic study and if we find that you've decreased the level of service by a certain amount, that, you know, then you do not qualify for this density bonus. Something to discuss, but at this early stage, I would just recommend that a traffic study absolutely be required as a starting point. Another thing is performing an economic analysis that identifies the changes to the school district. So clearly, we're talking about school district enrollment within the school district where one of these might be built. This is something that is not code mandated right now. Again, I'm tying this in as an extra requirement if you're going to go above eight units per acre. It is something that's listed in the code in chapter 250, which is the Affordable Housing Credit Program, our TDR program, which is basically the idea of sterilizing one property, ascending parcel and then transferring the allowable density in the form of sanitary flow to a receiving parcel. That code provision or code chapter has a provision that says that if you're going to transfer out of one school district and transfer additional density into another one, that you then need to do an economic analysis that weighs the impact in terms of, you know, number of students, additional students, financial impact on that school district. So that's not a totally new idea. It's something that does exist in the code. It's just not in chapter 255 in zoning. I think it's a useful thing and I think it's something that absolutely should be mandatory if you're going to be building a type of affordable housing development that is asking to go over eight units per acre. They absolutely should do that analysis and submit that information to the planning board. The other things are, you know, somewhat common sense and things you could, you know, you would think would be natural, providing substantial buffering and screening. Again, I wrote out these special conditions and aspects in the draft code, not going to read it verbatim, but you get the idea there of if you're going to be doing this higher density development, there's going to be an extra burden of buffering and screening of the site from neighboring residential property in particular. And then minimizing or completely eliminating the need for variances. You can't restrict somebody's right to appeal the zoning code, but you can tell the planning board, don't give them this additional extra, you know, exemption or higher density if this is something where they're going to need multiple setback variances and coverage variances. And basically, they can't fit it on the site because it's too much for that property. So those are basic guidelines that we came up with to guide the planning board when they're looking at a specific request for one of these or if they ever do, to go over eight units per acre. And I will also mention that this sort of model where there is a designated maximum permitted density in the code of, for, you know, for us, it's eight units per acre and then a provision whereby a developer can apply for up to 12 units per acre through some mechanism, a special permit exists in Southampton. Under their code, that special permit comes from their town board. Again, something you might want to consider, but any, again, any one of these developments is already going to be in front of the planning board to get a site plan approval and special permit. I think it's probably most appropriate for them to review that request. But again, something that could be discussed and something that could be changed from the specific way that I've drafted this for you. So again, the affordability requirements, the, I think the key thing that stays the same here is that the rent that's being charged is our affordable housing unit definition, our threshold that's established in the town code, which is 130% of fair market rent. You can see in the, in the presentation there, it gives you what those numbers reflect for a studio apartment unit to a four-bedroom unit. So, or actually, I guess I gave you, yeah, I only gave you one, two and three, excuse me, but the idea there, you see the spread. So under existing now, again, an affordable housing development, the tenant must meet our income restriction guideline, which is 130% of area median income. You see those numbers right there, which is, those are the effective ones established by HUD for one person all the way through a five-person household. We're not proposing any tenant income restrictions with the employer-sponsored affordable housing development because again, really, the idea here is that local businesses will know that they can house their employees within these housing units. Now, that's something where sort of my initial inclination is not to remove an income restriction, but with the goal here being employers providing housing for their employees through private investment, if you do have that income restriction, you're going to cut some people out. So for example, if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, you look at the two-person income limit. So that's roughly $160,000. So for example, if Southampton Hospital, Stony Brook Southampton Hospital wants to purchase one of these units and house some of their employees in there, if they have two young doctors in there and they each make $81,000 a year instead of 80, or I should say, you know, 82,000 instead of 81, but you see the point, they wouldn't be able to be housed in a development of this site if we impose the same income restriction on the tenants. So that's the reason why that was, is not present in this proposed code and its, its standards. So the other thing, and I mentioned this already, but is the lease term differs. Right now, it must be a year-round rental and year-round lease term. And again, what we're proposing here is a minimum of 90 days. When we start talking about requiring permits and enforcement, you don't want to have excessive turnover. You don't want to have somebody putting an employee in there for a week and then endlessly cycling them through there if you are going to permit this as a seasonal element to it. 90 days is kind of the minimum that encompasses the height of the summer season. And then as the supervisor pointed out here, there are state mandated requirements of when you evict somebody or terminate their tenancy. We'll revise our draft to reflect that more accurately. In this case, if you're less than a year, I do believe that the minimum requirement is 30 days. I think once you go over a year, it's 60 days. I'm not entirely sure on that, but you get the idea here of giving a safety net to those employees if they are terminated and to give them an opportunity to find new housing. Obviously, 30 days isn't much and there's not a lot of housing in the town, which is the reason we're talking about.
And we talked about this. It's one thing if you got, had to find housing in 30 days and it was November, it's a different story if it's July.
Yes. The end result might be the same, though. You won't find it.
Yeah.
So the tenant landlord requirements, so right now, again, under affordable housing development, the tenant must be a moderate income family, which is really just another way of saying 130% of AMI. And then the landlord is traditionally, you know, it's required under the code to be a joint or combined ownership and it's almost always a single entity, whether it be the housing authority, Windmill, you know, something to that effect. What we're envisioning here is something, again, where you're going to have individual units that are owned by an employer and then they're looking to put their employees within those units. There's also a provision here again, where it doesn't necessarily have to be the employee of that unit owner slash employer, as long as they work and other, and live in the town, they should also be eligible for this. So, but one of the things here is that, you know, and I mentioned it before, but that's going to require a permit. You know, we're envisioning it to be from, from my office, the Office of Housing and Community Development, to make, to make sure that there's compliance with those code restrictions. So, and then another thing we're discussing, you know, obviously, we don't have a draft of it, but the requirement that the unit owners be local businesses is something that would be enforced. They would have to create their own board or, you know, unit owners association. We would envision that there would be a requirement that the laws or bylaws of that organization require that only local businesses can own the units, but then also there would probably, there would likely be covenants and restrictions or some other, you know, formalized restriction over the property to, to ensure the same. So, so the bulk of what you have, and I prepared a memo breaking this down and also giving you the draft code language as it stands right now, but the majority of this obviously also mainly falls within this new section of, of the town code that we drafted. It would be the special permit standards for this as a new use and a special permit use. So that's basically the section of the code where if you say, I want to build, you know, a retail store or a marina, then you go into the code and there's a special list of standards that have to be met, you know, where you need to provide, you know, certain, well, it's not exactly in there, but I was going to say as an example, parking spaces and, but, you know, it's not specifically in that section of the code, but it lists all the standards and all the specific things unique to that use that you have to meet. So that's the bulk of what you have and that's entirely new, although again, we did base it off the existing affordable housing development. But then there's two other sections of the code that would also need to be amended. One is the definition of a resort unit, which really largely are condo units or large motel units with cooking facilities. Under the town code right now, it says anything that is a condominium automatically becomes a resort use as defined. We need to change that. We actually should probably change that irrespective of this conversation and this use, but that's something that must be changed. And then in the special permit standards, again, for a multiple residence, which this would be a type of multiple residence. Basically, any housing unit, any two or more housing units that are connected in the same building are a multiple residence as sort of a main category. And then you go into sort of subtype. So resort would be a subtype, affordable housing development would be a subtype of that. And then this employer-sponsored affordable housing development would also be a subtype of a multiple residence. When you go to the special permit standards for multiple residents, it basically says, if you're doing an affordable housing development, see the section of the code for the special permit standards for affordable housing development. If you're doing a resort development, see the section of the code that gives the specifics, specific standards for a resort use. Basically, we modified this where it says multiple, under multiple residents, if you're doing an employer-sponsored affordable housing development, see that section of the code that lists those specific special permit standards. So it's just keeping it consistent and directing the reader to the right section to get the specific regulations for it. So with this being said, our main kind of issues and concerns at this point, and again, I apologize, this slide where I'm talking at the beginning there about ownership, management, enforcement, that shouldn't be multiple bullet points. That's really sort of one sentence. But again, traditionally, these are managed by one entity. These are going to be managed or owned by individual unit owners who are employers and then there's going to be a central board. So we're worried not only about enforcement and permitting, but also if there's, you know, how the common area is going to be maintained and if there are going to be issues or conflicts between unit owners. You might have different types of businesses, you know, owning these units, they'll, they'll have different employees, you know, in different fields. So the interplay between them becomes very important. And if you have a private entity, you know, Matt overseeing this and ultimately responsible for it, I'm not implying that this is necessarily the case, but, you know, they might look the other way on, on certain conflicts. We need to make sure that there are safeguards provided that make sure that there's proper management of the facility in a comprehensive sense and, you know, by, by sort of one authority or a group of owners that are in lockstep on what the rules are and how things are going to be run. The other main concern is the lack of income restrictions. I talked about the reason, you know, that we don't want to have the income be capped at 130% of area median income. We don't think that's going to be, allow for this type of development to provide housing for all of the types of businesses and more so the employees of certain, certain income, you know, of a certain income. So we left this as a draft code provision sort of more forgiving in that sense of, and again, at the end of the day, the idea here is that the employer is going to be able to build that unit and be guaranteed that they can put their employees in there. If you have an income restriction, you're not going to get all those employees permitted to be in there. So the other, and this is a main one, and this is something that, that I focused on when we were, the last work session, we were talking about the senior housing unit density and perhaps going up to 12 units per acre. If you're going from eight units per acre as a maximum to 12, you know, that's a significant increase. So, you know, I went through the additional special permit standards that would need to be met if, or at least the way that I drafted this, if they're going to go above eight units per acre. But regardless, if you're permitting 12 units per acre, that's going to generate additional traffic. When we talked about it in the context of senior affordable housing developments, we noted that the industry standard for measuring generated vehicular trips has senior housing units as a different land use type and substantially lower. We noted that, you know, we haven't seen traffic problems around any of our existing senior housing developments. But right now, you know, we don't have any affordable housing developments that are over eight units per acre in density. Traffic is going to be a concern. It's something that we're going to have to take a very hard look at if that is a provision that's going to remain in here or if this idea is going to be forwarded at all. So really, that leads me to that first next step, which is the board having a discussion about this as a concept and basically seeing whether or not you want to move forward. Again, we drafted this code. I don't by any stretch of the imagination think that as I sit here today that I handed you something that's gold and I'm coming in front of you and saying, you know, adopt this and let's, let's move forward with it. It's going to take some conversation amongst the town board and then even more so amongst the public because this is the first time the public is hearing it. I know Ian and I had conversations about this a lot and we really wanted to get this idea out into a public forum to hear what the community thinks about it and further refine things. So this is really, this is why, you know, because you could look at it kind of two ways of why are you bringing an unfinished product in front of us? Shouldn't you work on this more? But we're bringing an unfinished product because we want to bring the public into this process as soon as possible. So you really should have conversations about the specific aspects that I proposed here and, and, you know, conversations about the income requirement. You know, again, you know, management, how are we going to ensure that? How are we going to review permits? All of that stuff. And then also, you know, I did some talking here because it's natural, because this relates to other uses and really specifically affordable housing development, whether it be senior or non-senior. or non-senior, but you might want to discuss this in the context of other provisions of the code and what you can or can't do with an affordable housing development right now to try and sort of align those in a way that makes sense. So this could also be, I think it sort of already is, but, you know, could open the door to a larger conversation of, well, what do we want the options for people who are looking to build affordable housing to be? You know, there's an affordable housing development, are we going to move forward with this employer-sponsored type of affordable housing development? Obviously, we have our ADUs, commercial apartments and commercial structures, a couple of other provisions in the town code that allow people to build affordable housing. So you might want to also just keep that in mind during your conversation, sort of the global and comprehensive context of that discussion, global really just being our town code in its sum. So that's really what I have as an introduction to this topic, and I'm sure there'll be questions, and I'm glad to answer them.
Ian, do you want to start since?
Yeah, I would love to. I'm, first of all, thank you, Eric. I'm very happy to be talking about this, this topic. I think it's an important one, and, you know, like the previous ones, complicated. It's not easy. You know, Eric has done a tremendous job here. I've talked a lot about housing in general, including this, senior housing and other things, and I very much appreciate his thoughtfulness with which he approaches it and his openness to be wrong. I agree with what he said at the end there, which is, we want to have this conversation publicly, and so please be kind. Eric's a smart guy. He's thought very hard about which section of the code to put various things in, and it's gone through a lot of different changes to get to this point, but by no means does he or do I think it's perfect. The idea is we want to sort of give out a concept and hear feedback so that we can refine this and hopefully decide whether it's, you know, an appropriate thing to do or not. When it comes to the use in general, employer-sponsored housing, I think that anybody who lives here and pays attention knows that the reality is many people who work and provide services in our town cannot afford to live here. I think that reality isn't escapable, it's undeniable, it's just a fact. Now, that may be trumped by concerns that we don't want to add more people, even if they're necessary for the services and businesses we have here. That's a fair concern, but that's at least, you know, formed the question of this conversation in reality, which is we are importing our workers and our services from outside, and that's only going to continue to grow. Now, we get into the complications of how are we going to fix that? Can we house all of our workers here? Is it reasonable? Is it possible? And I don't know, but I think that having the conversation publicly and hearing from other sides is the first step there. I also am tremendously proud of the work the town has done and the work Eric is working on, the all hands on housing. We provide, you know, I think the affordable housing has been going up here. This board has worked very, very hard on it, and I think town-sponsored projects are incredibly important, and we'll continue to do those. However, we can't do it all, and so I think that, you know, providing code changes that would allow for private businesses, developers, whoever, to also help solve these problems with non-town money would be great. Of course, you know, the caveat is making sure that we restrict this use to what we want it to be, and that's going to be a challenge for sure. You know, one of the things in here that Eric highlighted was income restrictions, and he, you know, the one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is, for two people, you couldn't buy a house here, that's for sure, and it might be hard to rent one. And so I believe that if we're going to do this, we should remove those income restrictions because frankly, I think in current affordable housing developments now, there's a risk for residents that if they take a job locally, they won't be able to keep their housing, and that's not right. We don't want people to be afraid to work locally because they'll lose their housing, and we just have these very weird things that cross. You know, the poverty level in East Hampton is just not the same. You know, maybe the number is the same in Suffolk County, but the reality is not the same. If you go to the food pantries, if you go anywhere, it's different out here. And so I want to, I want to make sure that this isn't abused, that we aren't, and we might want to look at other things. I think income is not the appropriate place because of doctors, police officers, teachers might be bigger than this, but maybe we want to look at specific jobs. You know, do we want a company that has social influencers to have an affordable, you know, employee or employer-sponsored housing, and how is there people who come have, you know, summer fun in Hampton? Probably not. So again, that's just an acknowledgement that there's work to do here, and we need to be careful. Eric and I both know that. We're not naive, but I certainly thought and have encouraged him to bring this conversation to the public so that we can, you know, get to work on solving them and either figure that we can't do this or we can effectively and responsibly. The comprehensive plan, as we spoke about earlier today, you know, mentions seasonal housing. We've never done anything about that. It mentions, you know, the housing problem generally, and, you know, we've talked a lot about trade parade traffic. You know, is traffic going to be worse in the area of a development such as this? Yes, but try driving to East Hampton, coming east in the morning or going west in the afternoon, and traffic exists whether people live here or they don't, and we are going to have businesses and going to provide services in our town regardless. I don't want to go on too, too long. I think that, so as a use, I am wholeheartedly a believer that this is necessary. I think we then get to more difficult conversations like density. So I think this is worth talking about even at, as an employee, employer-based sponsored housing project, as a use, whether the density stays at eight like all affordable, all affordable housing projects or goes to twelve. I think it's worth having the conversation about that increased density to make these projects more viable and frankly fill more of the need. If we were to contemplate or go forward with that increased density for this type of development, I would certainly want to make that the same for all affordable housing. I don't want employer-sponsored housing to have an advantage over other affordable housing type projects. So just so everybody's clear about that, if we go forward with this, I would never make this more permissive outside of some of those income restrictions, which we've were describing why they might be necessary. And then the traffic, you know, traffic is a real concern for sure and would need to be looked at at the planning board level. I think Eric alluded to, you know, some details will need to be worked out there as well. Another, one of my other comments would be about whether it's employer-owned always or whether somebody could own a unit and rent to somebody who lived and worked here. I'm a little bit skeptical of having a, an owner of a, you know, development like this rent directly to somebody who just lived and worked here, because I think it removes a layer of connectivity that a business has directly, knowing that they can't find workers and they need to provide them housing. So I would tend to be more restrictive there than this initial pass, but, you know, I'm open to all sorts of, you know, all other ideas. I think that it's very difficult to go from this concept to code specifics. I think Eric has done a great job. I think he's done a great job because he knows the code very well, he cares a lot about housing, he cares about the town, and I also think, again, he's very open to changing this. And so as a liaison to that department, I couldn't ask for a better person to be, you know, taking the lead on this, and I hope that everybody listening acknowledges that as the starting point and helps us get to what could be, you know, better legislation here. With that in mind, I, you know, I'm open to all other views and concerns. Hopefully, everybody's kind about it, but also direct. Don't walk on eggshells and say, yeah, it's basically a good idea and really you think it's terrible. Tell us if it's terrible. If it's terrible, we'll either, you know, agree because you make a good point, or we'll try to make it better. So I think you can do, people can do both, be critical of this and also kind and appreciative of the attitude with which we approach this. And again, the reality that this need, anybody who comes out and says that there is no need to house more workers here, that people can always find a place to live, that is, I think, not a rational idea. So I think we should, you know, I'm looking forward to talking more about this, I'm looking forward to listening to everybody. I think we should try to make a difference, and I think we should do it thoughtfully, and I think we can do all of those things. And like I said, I'm really happy to be here today talking about this. I want to hear from other board members. Eric and I have talked a ton about this, and the fact that we're talking, you know, privately means I want to talk publicly, and that's why we're here today. Eric also alluded to the fact that there's a number of other things involved in affordable housing that naturally have come out. Frankly, the senior housing density kind of came out from this, and I think that that was such a good thing to learn. We carved it out as a separate, you know, thing because senior housing density is really unique and shouldn't be bogged down by this more complicated thing. But similar to that, there's density of affordable housing generally, there's the maximum number of units on a particular site, the minimum, you know, acreage. Eric referred to the resort zone and what it says about multi, you know, residence zones. All of these things are naturally coming out as part of the conversation, so with the supervisors and the board's blessing, I hope later to come back with a more comprehensive view or comprehensive conversation about affordable housing, what the rules and regulations are. Should we consider changes? Well, we should certainly consider them, but are they wise to go forward with or not? I think code is always a living, evolving thing and should be looked at, and so hopefully we can do that soon. But I also thought we shouldn't wait to do everything at once because this use, I think, is, in my opinion, necessary and worthwhile to talk about, and so talking about this use by itself is important, whatever we do with the other restrictions. Maybe the maximum density stays, you know, the maximum number of units is the same, the acreage minimum is the same, but this use, you know, by itself, I think is worthwhile to talk about, and so I think it's, you know, a valuable, separate conversation, but just, you know, full disclosure and transparency, I'm hoping to broaden this into a, you know, overall conversation about what affordable housing regulations are and how we might improve them.
Thank you, Ian. I well said, I think that's very well said, into bringing a new concept to the community and to the board, and I appreciate all of your efforts and Eric's efforts and staff's efforts on working on all this. And I think that the devil will be in the details, as usual, with everything else. It is a complex issue. For me, the most important thing is guardrails to protect, to protect folks from abuses of this type of development. We talk about seasonal development, ninety-day lease, but when you talk about doctors and police officers and teachers, that's not seasonal. So a ninety-day lease, to me, would be frightening, particularly since we're offering apartments with bedrooms for children that'll be in a school district, and that means they only can go every ninety days, have security of every three months, knowing whether they'll be in the same school district, in the same class, et cetera, et cetera. I ask on, you know, what's, what's the parking requirements now that we have for one bedroom, two bedroom, three, and how much would that take up of the development, increasing the density with the same parking regulations that we have? I don't see that addressed. Here also, waste management with increased density, want to look at waste management besides waste order management, who's responsible for that? And again, conceptually, I'm happy to hear us talk about privately funded workforce housing. It's an element that's a brand-new concept in the town, and this is what we need, thinking outside of the boxes. I know a lot of employers have always have asked many, many times about workforce housing, and I know folks have purchased small motels, et cetera, to try to get housing for their employees. It is one of the major crises that we have in town economically, that we don't have a workforce anymore, and that includes the town. And, but basically, those types of ideas, what are the tax implications? Is that part of my employment package? And then I have to pay taxes on my apartment as income besides the rental? And so those kinds of details, and I'll just stop there because I have a lot of them written down, are just part of what we need to flesh out.
For sure. Sure. Okay. I mean, look, I think the first obvious thing to state is that we're not going to solve the housing issue we have here without the private sector taking part in it, and, you know, this is one of many possible approaches to it. You know, as I look at this, I look at it through the lens of the town being, I would be safe to assume, the largest employer in the town. And, you know, what would this play out for? You know, could the town can't partake in this? So therefore, are we taking away potentially properties that could be used in some form or other to offer housing to public employees, teachers, et cetera? So that's one major concern I have. There's a slight fear, too, that, you know, going down this route leaves it open to a kind of a pay-to-play element, which is that it's in the public sector, so whoever the highest bidder is is going to be the one who can provide housing, and is that necessarily going to provide the essential services we need to the town? And that's when you're talking about your nurses, your doctors, your teachers. So, you know, Ian kind of hinted at it earlier, but like, how do you begin to ring-fence affordable housing for that kind of essential employee category, which I think is key? And I think it's tied in many ways to, you know, the early discussion around the senior housing. Look, I think it's the right thing to do to increase density on senior housing to twelve units per acre, but that requires services provided to seniors. Seniors, by nature, are often retired, and, you know, increasing density of a needy population without having adequate housing for those to serve them and help them, it's not a recipe for success. So I have grave concerns over this as a concept. I think that it really needs very strong guidelines as to what can and cannot be developed and who that housing would go to. And I think the other thing there as well is, you know, just the seasonal temporary housing. You know, I think, yes, there's impacts on school districts of, you know, having people in housing year-round, and I appreciate that, and I commend you actually that you've looked at the financial impact associated with that, because I think that's a very fair assessment. You know, with that said, your year-round employees are those who are likely to be taking part in volunteer organizations far more, too, your EMS side of things, your food banks, whatever it is, and those are really the critical functions that really behind the scenes of what we do, that's what makes this community work. Without them functioning, it wouldn't be the town it is. So, you know, I think that finding that correct balance between, you know, year-round and seasonal is absolutely critical. You know, I also would say that, you know, is there room to explore, if this is a total housing pool we're looking at with a certain number of units, can we ask that private developers reserve some of those for specific industries or, you know, specific income categories to make this, you know, a fair opportunity for people as a whole? So those are just my thoughts around this initially.
So I'll just add on to what your last comment was, is one of my comments on there. It's about percentage of units for multiple industries. I guess one of my fears would be is that as property values increase, units might increase in valuation over time through equity that's being built in. When does this maybe become unaffordable for small businesses? How do we protect small businesses so we don't just become large business or national businesses on there? What are those guardrails, as Kate sort of mentioned? So yes, how do, is there going to be ratios of units for, for multiple businesses, multiple industries, to make sure that, you know, the community needs are met by this initiative? Which is actually something I look forward to supporting. I don't mind the increased density on there. I think I've already said that publicly in the past on there. The compliance issue, I think this is going to come down a lot more to more effort or needs from your office, Eric, on there, either through the permitting aspect on it or the inspection aspect on it then, too. But a lot of, and then the thirty-day, the ninety-day lease on there, I look at that, I, I'm not as concerned on that, but now I've been educated by other board members here, yes, let's just make sure that that works in so as best for, not just for the property owners, but for the tenants and their families. Another thing about families here, is this, is this a situation in which they take the pressures off of school systems, that it should be more, more for people that don't have families or don't have children? I don't know where that goes to also, but again, I want to make sure that this stays affordable for small businesses also, also maybe larger institutions, but at the same time that the variety of businesses that can use these facilities works in the overall goal of what we're trying to do right now, which is continue to hold the community together then, too. That's what I want to make sure of then, too, and I think that's going to be a challenge.
Okay. Well, we've talked a lot about this, Eric, Ian, and myself. I support this conceptually. I think we have to be creative as we take on the housing affordability crisis here in our community, and as Tom said and others, that we need to work with the private sector for affordable housing. I agree, we need guardrails. Part of that is compliance with permitting and inspection. Do these units need a rental registry so that we're ensured that, you know, all the, you know, proper safety protocols are being followed? But I would like to see us, you know, kind of flesh this out a bit and, you know, because I think it's something that we, will benefit our community. I've had meetings with the folks at the East Hampton Healthcare Foundation. Eric and I went with Katie Casey from the East Hampton Housing Authority. They're trying to figure out ways in order to be able to staff the freestanding emergency room that's going to open shortly. So, you know, we need teachers and that's going to open shortly. So, you know, we need teachers and doctors and phlebotomists and radiologists and police officers that live and work in our community. So I'm hearing, I was on a call the other day with Adam Fine at the, I hope he won't mind me saying this, but, you know, he leaves for work, folks are leaving for work now at 4:00 in the morning, 4:15, in order to now, you know, the trade parade is just starting earlier and earlier. And, you know, we're working from the other angle. We're trying to get the MTA to include, you know, a capital project for upgrading the infrastructure for out here. So more of our, you know, staff for the town and other businesses to schools can, that the train would work better. There'd be more times for folks to take. But, you know, I think that this is something that we need to pursue personally.
So Ian, your next steps are? Well, Ian, I'm hoping to start a robust public conversation here. And I'm sure there's people out there thinking that we're crazy and this is a terrible idea, and I would love to hear why.
Nah.
And I would also like to hear-
That's the philosophy, Major Ian.
From the people who are supporters of why we need this. You know, I've talked to some of you already, so I'm not, I don't think this is going to be easy by any means, but I think that this, you know, this is sort of, it's not the first step because I've been talking with Eric for months about this. But it's, you know, it's a big step in terms of turning it over to the public. So I think the next step is I'll talk with Eric about this. Hopefully we get comments. Eric has something to say too, so.
Oh, yeah. No, I was going to say, what I'm thinking the next step is going to be, would be for myself to meet with planning, with the attorneys, basically process all of these concerns that were listed. What I'll do is an evaluation or a report for you that, you know, sort of addresses those concerns, gives you ideas, gives you options, you know, for example, maybe you don't want to have a seasonal element to it, you know, options that we could do to make sure that the tenants are from a particular business and maybe, you know what I mean, or area, field, maybe not another, basically all the things that the concerns that were just raised. Well, you know, list options of how we think we can address that. We'll refine it further based on your comments and then bring something back to you.
And I think honestly, the other zoning code amendments that-
What's happening? I heard a phone call. Oh, we're back. Okay. We're back. Not if we're, not if we're, not if we're off. Everybody's okay? All right, guys. We're back. What's happening? I heard a phone call. Oh, we're back. Okay. We're back. Not if we're, not if we're, not if we're off. Everybody's okay? All right, guys. We're back. Glad I brought a sandwich today instead of going out and get one. Do we have much more to do with Eric?
No, not. I'm going to say one thing just to finish my sentence.
Yes, she did. It's a cliffhanger. It's a cliffhanger. It was Heath. It was Heath. Yeah, I called him. Did he pay us? Did Joanne supposed to tell him we're good?
I think we're good.
Looks like we're good.
Okay, we're out of here. Close.
Not yet, not yet.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
One more topic.
We have one more topic in liaison reports. I may hold mine. Maybe I'll just talk about my Wayne Scott.
We do public comment in the beginning, so I made an exception for the zoning code amendments work group because I've done that in the last time. So I will say that in the six-plus months that I've been here, I've only done it three times for very specific topics. Yeah. We can be heard, so that's good to know.
Please stand by them.
Yeah.
Oh, we can be heard.
Yeah, which we should have been told, which we should have been told.
And anybody wishing to speak, at the beginning of every meeting, we have a public portion, so next Thursday, or I'm sorry, this Thursday, right? At 6:00 PM is the next opportunity. And then the first three Tuesdays of every month, the second of which is a Montauk, and the first and third Thursday, there's always an opportunity to be heard.
Right now, folks can hear you, yes?
Okay, great.
So David asked, Councilman Lees asked about the next steps. And I was just going to, you know, say, I think Eric's heard our comments. Hopefully we hear from the public. And I was going to say, the other zoning code amendments, I think, was, you know, a time to be encouraged by government. I think we had a meeting about that. We had a lot of feedback. We had a second meeting today, constructive conversation on both sides, and I hope that this proceeds in a similar manner. So hopefully we can come back in another month or something like that, refine it a little bit, and keep it going.
Great. Okay, so now we're going to switch gears, and we've got Mark Abramson here, who's going to give a presentation on Beechtree leaf disease. So, welcome, Mark.
Supervisor, Town Board.
Supervisor, Town Board, this is Mark Abramson from the Farm Natural Resources Assistant Director. So what we're trying to bring to attention is the Beech Tree Leaf Disease that we've been seeing affecting most of the Beech Trees that we have out here. I want to give some background and then I'm gonna send it over to Andy Drake, who's one of our on-staffed licensed arborists to give some more information about management and how he sees actually flagging and damaged trees moving forward. So I don't know if you want to pull up the presentation? Doesn't seem like it's on.
It should be on the bar at the bottom. The it should be opened already.
Where is that right now?
You can just click on it.
On the Zoom window? Was that computers in back here?
No.
It should be in the Zoom. Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Slide show.
Oh, come on, Chris.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not coming up, but let's go from here.
Looks good.
Okay, so let me go to the next screen. So the what you're gonna see on the screen, so the highlighted yellow area is what has happened since 2019. It was first discovered in 2012 in northeastern Ohio. And then the 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 disease kind of moved on throughout the rest of the country or the eastern coast. And you can see that it's such a huge spread from that point to now. So to recognize the for the areas in East Hampton Town that are mostly Beech are these two areas in East Hampton, Amagansett have the highest density of Beech Trees. And as Andy has seen so far is that most of them are affected. We're trying to launch the next screen. This is also Montauk of the two most dense areas in Montauk and Amagansett and East Hampton. And then we've been seeing that a majority of all the Beech Trees have been affected by this nematode, which affects the leaves and eventually kills the trees because they cannot fully synthesize and get nutrients. The name of the nematode is on there, hard to pronounce. I would say.
Come on, give a shot.
The Electus Cronata McCanny. LCM for short.
God bless you.
So it invades the buds. And then for the first couple of years, you can see that the there's stripes on the leaves. We can show on the next screen of a healthy and then a diseased tree. So you can see that the there's veins on the leaves, which eventually then crumble. And then for severe infestation then becomes they actually will not evolve, come out the next year. And what we've what has been researched is that there's thinking that when the the leaves unravel, the eggs are then dispersed, then they can be transferred from from birds, insects. And then once they can actually survive for a long time on the ground until there is some moisture and then they can actually then infect the other trees throughout. I'm gonna push it off to Drake over here, who is, like I said, one of our licensed arborists from Land Acquisition Department. We're trying to see how to manage these these Beech Trees that have been affected. Some of them have died and if it's a hazard tree, we will have Andy, one of the Andys come out and take over and try and flag these moving forward.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andy Drake with the Town Land Acquisition and Management Department, Senior Environmental Analyst. And as Mark said, I'm ISA certified arborist and have my tree risk assessment qualification through ISA as well, mostly working on the managing of town-owned nature preserves and CPF properties, but also being called in to help with other town agencies, such as the Highway Department, to assess tree risk on street trees. Most recently, we were called into the Senior Center on Acabonic Road to assess a tree there, mostly on nature preserves, though. Obviously, we've had our fill of this through Southern Pine Beetle on our native pitch pine trees as well. I feel like every time I'm here, I'm like the bearer of bad news. But such is life. Thank you, Mark, for having me. And thank you Supervisor and Town Board for addressing this issue, which is yet another threat to our native landscape and environment. Beech Leaf Disease is affecting the majority of Beech Trees here. As Mark pointed out, both European specimen trees and American Beech Trees, which is our native species, mostly found in Amagansett in the Stony Hill area. As you've noticed, if you looked around, most of these trees are affected. A lot of them are, the leaves are turning brown, leaves are curling. Mark showed that's the striation of the leaves, which is the clear indicator of this problem. It's a nematode causing the issue. It's a microscopic round worm. It's the first instance anywhere where a nematode is causing tree mortality. So for that reason, there's not a lot known about this. There's it's there's a lot of studies being done, but there's just not enough data at this time to really know what a successful treatment or management might look like at this time, especially on a large scale. Littolensis is the associated vector, but the full cause of Beech Leaf Disease and how it spreads is still not fully known, like I said. Unfortunately, large-scale management of our public lands is probably not yet feasible for that same reason. We just don't know enough about it. Currently, there's no way to effectively control or manage it. But I know that studies are being done on especially young individual trees, specimen trees. And I know that tree care specialists and companies are having some positive results from Broadform, which is a spray that they're spraying all over tree canopies, which is a pesticide, a fungicide. Because really the damage being done is, you know, the nematode is the vector, but it's bringing in a fungus that's essentially killing the tree.
They're spraying, right?
What is that?
Like a neem oil?
A neem oil. It's Broadform is a pesticide. That's all I know about that. But Phytophosphate 30 is also a fertilizer, which they're using in root trenching and root treatment. Again, on individual young trees, that's helping to kill the fungus that's killing the trees. There's also, I spoke with somebody at a local tree company that they're saying they're doing a lot of studies with tree injections as well. But again, this is gallons upon gallons of chemicals. You know, some some folks, private landowners, might be really interested in saving certain specimen trees on their property to prolong the life of the tree. There's no cure for the disease, but there is, you know, using these methods, there has been shown extended life in the tree. And some trees are bouncing back better than others. So I've heard it's 90% BLD is, you know, whereas SBB, Southern Pine Beetle, for our native pitch pines, that was 100% mortality. Beech Leaf Disease is about 90% mortality once it's in. And most of our trees are affected. So again, you know, with the help of some local tree care specialists, some individual trees may be able to be saved. I mean, there is there is some hope, you know, that these can be saved. At least the life can be prolonged. But, you know, anyhow.
Yeah, to interrupt, I mean, we did some research on, I mean, to do like, like Andy said earlier, for the large stands, it's really not something that we can effectively control right now.
Yet.
But but the smaller stands on private property, doing some pruning to increase air circulation, which helps dry the leaves out, is something that can be done. And just regular tree care, including like Andy stated about phosphate insertion to, you know, just to help keep the Beech a little bit more healthy and possibly resistant to to the nematode moving forward. Maybe it'll extend the life long enough to find something that that we can actually try and combat this, you know, this issue we're having right now.
And so for these landowners that are affected in mostly Amagansett, like we said, as you're all aware, we do have clearing restrictions on our private lands. And so I think the reason, main reason Mark is bringing this topic up is because there are going to be some dead and dying large trees on folks' private lands and that may threaten their structures, their driveways, their pools, their, you know, their backyards, trees are going to die. So I believe the clearing of some of the further gone trees are gonna be exempt from the clearing restriction.
Which is something we similarly did to the Southern Pine Beetle. There's there's affected trees that are hazards. We allow it to them to be removed. And then as long as you're not maintaining an understory or minimally maintaining an understory at the time of clearing, that we will not consider that that area cleared.
Right. They're not gonna exempt any clear cutting of backyards and, you know, adding lawn to these areas. It's minimal disturbance to the understory that would be exempt. And our department can help with that. I know you had our department's information.
Want to go back slide, Mark?
So our department can help, you know, with with the assessing of private lands. If a landowner is interested, we can help to assess for damage, you know, and and help to mark trees that they may be fearful of, that may be hazardous to their their property that can be removed, that falls into this category. But any treatment of specimen trees that I was mentioning before would be up to the landowner and their own personal contractors. So.
Yeah, because as of right now, and we don't, the town doesn't do any any insecticide or pesticide on town-owned lands. So we definitely do not want to really encourage that. But again, if there are specimen trees and the homeowner would like to try and save that specific tree, then it's some there's there's options for them. But we will, you know, recommend doing the pruning and possibly just fertilizing the tree to extend their life. And hopefully in the future, we'll have something that's more more substantial to actually saving the trees rather than just, you know, prolonging their life.
Sure, better data and better knowledge with time should come. But again, this is all unprecedented. So I know it's been going on here since 2020, but still, it's a it's a pretty short four years. And trees are kind of bouncing back in some in some cases. And then others just look terrible. So a lot of unknowns, but that's all I really have.
Yeah, we did some research. There's some place in Massachusetts, Rachel Kapler has been doing some research to actually try and possibly cultivate resistant Beech Trees. So they'll they'll actually, if you contact them and you have a tree that actually is surviving, that they'll come out, maybe do a clipping and add it to their their bunch of trees that are resistant and possibly cultivate them for future, you know, reinsearching into into the actual forests that formerly had beaches that were healthy.
There's some good information on the New York State DEC website also. And I'm not sure how outdated the info is in some cases, but they were asking to be notified of areas of Beech Leaf Disease. I mean, they might just say, yeah, we're aware and, you know. But there's there's some really good information on the New York State DEC webpage if anybody is interested in learning more.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll we'll share that on social media.
All right, great.
Just just one quick question for you guys. I mean, I mean, obviously, we saw with the Pine Beetle destruction, like that enormous loss of habitat for a lot of other creatures. There are some recommendations, you know, that while you can't replant the Beech, because obviously the nematode issue is still there, you know, in areas where there's significant loss of forest, planting other alternatives, some hickory varietals, some oak. Have we given any consideration to that in kind of any areas where we think we're gonna see significant tree loss from this?
Our department and the Department of Natural Resources always recommends planting native vegetation. So whether it be Eastern Red Cedar or or white or black oak or hickory, like I said, I mean, native native trees should be planted in areas of loss if they they want to do that. I don't think it would be a requirement.
Yeah, definitely not. We've encouraged, you know, same thing with the Pine Beetle. We've encouraged native trees to be planted, but we don't want to cause more damage because there are some areas that have lost pine trees that are looking better. They do have some great understory plantings coming in and some saplings that actually are reestablishing themselves. So I mean, it's case by case basis, but definitely we always encourage planting native trees. And and again, if the if it is a case by case basis and it's something that they really lost a lot of Beech Trees, you know, we would consult with them and recommend what we think would be best for that area.
And just, I mean, that's kind of a larger municipal, but I'm talking private properties. Do you feel there's any need, you know, from a habitat perspective to say if we're gonna allow people to clear a dead tree, to plant a sapling of kind in place to ensure we have that long-term habitat maintained?
And we'll see moving forward. Because right now, we haven't had too many people approach us with taking down trees. But again, moving forward, we if we have such a significant amount of trees taken down, then we will encourage replacement with native that would survive better.
Yeah, and we do have large areas of Native American Beech, Vegas Grandifolia, but it's nothing like our pine barrens and our pine forests. So it's not as dramatic. It's still quite a loss to those specific areas that we highlighted. But it's 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 not the same acreage or extent that the Southern Pine Beetle caused.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing I would call out was with regards to the fungicide. It's like the one clear, like guidance given if people do look to use them is do not do them over a body of water or near to a body of water, of course.
Right.
So with the injections, it's a lot easier because you're gonna get it, keep it specifically to that tree. And obviously it can.
Right, and I don't think anybody's gonna be treating large areas on their properties. I mean, you know, when you talk about treatment, it really is individual trees. I think it's enormously expensive at this point as well. So, I mean.
Yeah, I think like I said, $1,000 to $5,000 per tree or something.
It's it's not inexpensive.
So I know during the State of the Forest, the report annually that the Farmer Land Management has given the last couple of years, this is sort of touched on, but it's only amplified now as we've started to see in some of our great vistas that we have here, like Old Stone Highway right now, where that American Beech Forest is sort of just disintegrating. And the way that the Beech grew from root to root, instead of maybe seed pods on, is a little different. There is hope out there, but there, you know, we saw it on the two major Beech Trees that we had at our town hall last year. They're actually looking pretty good right now.
Right.
So standalone ones are fine, but the stands of trees are different. If you go down to the East Hampton Library and see that European Beech that's just died now in the corner there in Buell Lane, you're seeing that. But so I'm hoping that as time goes, maybe the stronger ones in the forest will survive. We hear that a lot, as we maybe find some ways to potentially manage this better with time that would be there, that hopefully enough of our American Beech Trees can hold on that we can still have stances for generations to come. But you have to get past this current 10, 15 years of, you know, nematode issues. So I understand this comes down to a lot of zoning things as far as the clearing. And then I'm happy that the supervisor and Councilmember Rogers wanted to bring this forward and let individuals know how that might affect their property, their properties and their planning stages too.
Yeah, while we don't know, have all the information, it is just important to be hopeful, right? And we'll take it as it comes. And when we go do assessments on on private lands, we can say, you know, yes, perhaps perhaps all these trees do have Beech Leaf Disease. But, you know, unless it's currently hazardous, you know, we're not, we're most likely, we're not gonna, you know, encourage or recommend management right away, you know, in terms of cutting and removing large trees. So, right, we take an approach of, you know, being hopeful and manage what you have to. But let's see what happens in the coming months and years.
I hear you loud and clear that it's not the same type of infestation as the Southern Pine Beetle and folks that may get nervous on seeing that there is something happening to their trees. It's just don't rush to cut them down because it's a different type of infestation.
With Southern Pine Beetle, infestation and mortality could happen in as quickly as six weeks.
And is that still on the rise? Is it still?
It's it's not necessarily on the rise because we've lost so much.
There's no fuel for them to feed on too.
In Napeg, I've seen.
They're going west of here. Now, west of here is a big regional issue.
And that's a problem with the.
In the west of here and our pine barrens, yeah, there's there's New York State DEC, Department of Forest Health, their foresters are out there still. Department of Forest Health, their foresters are out there still. They're, they're, they're working on it still. I mean, we're getting the situation reports weekly and they're still, they're still felling thousands of trees there trying to combat it. Here, really, all we have left in terms of large stands of pine trees, we still have individual pitch pines scattered throughout the town. But Napeg stretch, there's still, there's still plenty of stands of living trees. And I, I'm still doing inspections for a few homeowners that are interested. And I noticed and marked several, maybe 30 or 40 stage one trees, newly infested, you know, pitch pine trees just within the last month.
Yeah, the biggest thing that I've seen is, is now that the trees are down, people are, are looking to, they're calling it fire hazard. And then they want to then clear out the, you know, the, the dead, the dead wood.
Sure. But which I know the state is working on in Napeg, right?
It's not carte blanche if you have to clear out wood that's on the ground because from the clearing regulations that governs your underlying zoning. And that's what I think we're trying to do here, correct Kathy? You know, if you need to, our town is here to help instruct you the best ways to remove dead vegetation, but also to revegetate the areas that you legally have to have vegetated.
Yeah, I think one thing that's, I mean, just while we're on the southern beetle piece and just, you know, in terms of removal, like, you know, what can be accepted the sanitation department for mulching and what can't. My, my understanding is, and we can check this with the department, but I do not believe we're allowed to accept any brush that has got contamination in it from the pine beetle.
Yeah, it was perhaps two years ago, the, our town recycling center stopped accepting material, known material of infested pine trees. And at that time, we had to stop our, we were, we were running a waiver program where we were accepting this material for free. And then that got cut off very quickly by the sanitation department. I think the DEC was involved in that decision as well. So, yeah, it's unfortunate and it kind of limits what you can do with what's already down. But I think, you know, it's less risk while it's on the ground than it was dead standing. So, you know, we have to, you know, take our wins, I guess, you know, with that. But anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark and Andy for coming in today.
Thank you for having me. Some, some positive news.
Yeah.
I also just want to say, Andy, thank you. It's really nice. And Mark, thank you. But it's nice to have a certified arborist here. And I actually spoke with the other certified arborist from the department this week as well. And so that's a real asset to the town.
We are so grateful for the opportunity. I mean.
But this is why. It's a service to us, the board and the community.
We got certified through the town to try to provide expertise to different.
At your own initiative, at your own initiative.
Yes. No, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mark.
Have a great day.
Okay. So we're in the home stretch. We are up to liaison reports.
All right. I'll skip a few because we can wait till next meeting for some one or two, but some we have to go through. Armageddon sit. Just a reminder for the CAC that the 7/18, July 18th, the annual lobster bake is the Armageddon Live Station, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
We had that.
We had it. We had it Sunday night.
Sorry, sorry.
And it was spectacular.
Delicious.
7:20, we have Soldier Ride taking place from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And there is a dinner for that event on Armageddon Square in the evening as well. And then July 29th and 30th, we have the annual Nipper Tournament taking place at Alvin Lanning's Beach, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then on the 3rd of August, we have the annual junior lifeguard tournament, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Atlantic Beach. So just heads up for residents in that area. Skipping ahead to human services, just ironic that we had a power outage today. Just wanted to give seniors a reminder of what services we can give to them in the event of power outages. So the center is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And you can always call the Human Services Department, 631-329-6939, for any assistance or advocacy. The senior center is open during those hours. Offer you can call, call off, come charge your electronics. And for any residents over 60, we can provide transportation to the center if needed. If a senior needs AC installed in their window, the residential repair maintenance mechanic is available to provide that service. Anyone who has a power outage can call 1-800-490-0025 to report an outage or text out to PSEGLI, which is 773454. And then just lastly, in this, that you can receive enhanced notification with PSEG's Critical Care Program, where they'll stay in touch with you. If you, to join that program, you need to provide a medical certificate from a doctor, a local board or nurse practitioner advising of the medical condition you may have. Such devices are included for that criteria include apnea monitors for infants, cuirassus respirators, hemodialysis machines, IV feeding machines, IV medical infusion machines, oxygen concentrators, positive pressure respirators, respirator ventilators, rocking bed respirators, suction machines, tank type respirators, and other devices that may qualify certified by a physician. Lastly, in human services, on the 18th, the Layton AM, there will be a concert at the senior center in which our former town supervisor and current town judge will be performing. So looking forward to that. Sanitation, we had a waste summit at the end of last month with Suffolk County, myself and Craig Fick from the sanitation department were in attendance. The key thing to take away from there is obviously, you know, we're aware of the proposed closure of the Brookhaven landfill. You know, what the county was really emphasizing was that they really want to transition to start to look at waste as a resource. The primary means by which they're looking at doing that is waste incineration to produce electricity. And their proposal and lobbying efforts will be to have that electricity paid at the same rate that the windmills will be receiving for their kilowatt per electricity. ADU committee, there was a formal vote of the committee in the last meeting with regards to a change to the code they'd like to make with regards to lot size for attached, sorry, for attached ADUs. The current stipulation is that the lot size needs to be 20,000 square feet. The committee would like to see that changed to 10,000 square feet. There are potentially some other changes coming recommended from that committee. I will do that as one big group, but that's the most recent. That, given where we're at right now, that is everything I'm going to address for today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Nature Preserve Committee met last week. The maintenance report was primarily a lot of fencing replacements, baseline documentations, and many kiosks were replaced between, within the township by our land stewards. There will be two recommendations coming from the committee. One, the recommendation is going to be for the draft management plan that they, that they passed for the field property, which is in Armageddon. And then also, there, Lee Dion, Mr. Dion came in to pitch an idea for extending, not even extending, reopening a small trail that would go from, to the Little Scoy Pond proposed trail. And the committee supported that. So we'll be seeing those letters and recommendations coming forward shortly. For aquaculture, I want to let everyone know that Threema Harbor is closed and Threema Harbor is closed, it was being closed since Saturday, July 13th, and will be continuing through Wednesday, July 17th. This is for shell fishing lands, and this is specifically due to, to the Great Bionic fireworks that were held just this past weekend on there then too. In lifeguarding, I think from Jeff Thompson, I believe it was Lieutenant Jeff Thompson, he's taking the town lifeguards, there's an increased rip current activity and surf resulting in, from the remnant low Hurricane Burrel, Barrel, excuse me, is a very busy weekend. There were a total of 21 responses recorded across both Armageddon and Montauk districts at every beach, with the exception of Indian Wells, which resulted in 26 subjects being rescued on Sunday alone. Actually, there, we heard at the lifesaving station benefit that there was actually one time at Atlantic Avenue, which all three lines were out at one time. And they had to go out to another save without actually even coiling back up. That's how busy the rips were out there. Lifeguards, to date, lifeguards made 104 rescues. Only 20 away from matching last year's seasonal total, and we're just past the midpoint of July. Past majority of the rescues are occurring Atlantic Avenue, Dish Plains, because of the sandbar, which there's been a consistent sandbar and provided water recreational activities for all bathers, but concurrently lifeguards are supervising young children playing on the sandbar. And when that sandbar breaks, there becomes a rip current then too. Captain Devon Coy and his crew Atlantic Avenue are making rescues often before swimmers even realize they are in trouble. And that shows the efforts that the town lifeguards have and how well they are trained under Chief John Ryan Jr. Similarly, most of the rescues at Dish Plains are occurring in a static rip just west of the jetty. The ratios of patron, the patron rescues at Dish Plains far exceeds that of any other town beach means. Other swimmers are helping other swimmers. Let's see here. Rail sun contest, chasing the protected beach was called to, a personal watercraft was called to assist in the rescue of a pair of swimmers swept out past the jetty. Captain Ethan McCormick and his staff deserve similar recognition for their management of Dish Plains, very crowded, very spread out, water recreational area, which includes the protected beach and surf breaks. For more information, you can go on town online and I'll forward this information to, to the town board members moving forward. But once again, it just shows the training professionalism of the East Hampton Town Lifeguards and how much they protect the areas. Moving on, lastly, I want to discuss with the town board, I know we sent an email off this morning, I don't know if y'all got to read it. It's about a proposed application for a CFA grant application, which would have to be in by the end of this month, but also done through resolution. Two options, one of the options were for a new potential park in Armageddon that the management plan was just drafted and approved. The other one would be actually for conservation and restoration effort of the South End Cemetery, which would include tree surveys, conservation of stonework and fence work. It's a town-owned cemetery. I talked to the trustees, the cemetery trustees, and they would support, support an application for that. I'm trying to find direction from the town board on either of these two projects, if you'd like me to move forward, because with the timing upcoming, it would take a lot of effort. Personally, the strength of the applications might be stronger for the cemetery right now, based on where we're at and what we can get managed together in the next two weeks. You could sort of let me know after you see that email. I know it's been a little bit of a long, long day here then too, and let me know. We would want to do it through, through a resolution, but for the grant intake also.
And the resolution would be this Thursday?
It would be for this Thursday. So it's a tight window. Let me know if there's any things you might support, don't support on it. If you do support it, Sam Klein and I will go full steam at it then too.
So can we, can we just have a few minute discussion now? Because we're going to be going into exec session. The new park in Armageddon, nature preserve committee put together a management plan, but it hasn't been, you know, discussed here at a work session. It hasn't been adopted by the town board. And I don't know what the, the grant application, how much we would be asking for that.
Anticipated, anticipated it would be about a $1.5 million project, including this expansion of the parking lot there, which would be part of this. It's not, that is not part of the, the management plan. It is discussed in the management plan. But yes, that's, that's what it would be. Again, the, on CFA grants, the strength of the applications, a lot of times will come from where you're at in the process and also the community's support on it and a lot of historical means on it. The, that's the answer to some of those questions there. Yeah. I mean, one problem for me there is just that that's not being presented to the CAC and Armageddon. So.
It hasn't been presented publicly. So to me, I think it makes more sense to go with the South End Cemetery application. And what is the, the dollar figure? What's the ask there?
So it's probably going to be upwards of nearly a half million dollars of work with approval from the town board. What we would do is reach out to the studies that we've worked on with Historic Society, with the Barrow Ground Preservation Group, look at the fence, the trees. We already know numbers for the fencing, but also for the potential, any tree work, tree studies, and then also conservation of the stonework. That cemetery's been deteriorating a little bit. There was recently, there was a tree that just fell down in one of the elms that broke multiple stones in there and fencing on there. So funds are going to have to be spent in a very short order. But this is more of a larger global look at it, something that we've been developing, to be ready to do within these next couple of years. But the opportunity might lie itself right now as there's not any other applications going this year to the CFA.
So having worked on, worked, applied for a CFA grant and been denied, and then gone back for consultation from the state on where were our weak points, and then applying the next year and receiving the $600,000 grant, two points. One, from my understanding, going through that process, they are looking for the best, the project that has the most aspects put together already. And since the, the park is still in the discussion stages, I think you'll have a better chance of procuring the grant for the cemetery. And also just as indication, the state of the cemetery, as you're talking about it, you know, you get the information that you award to the grant in January and we'll, it looks like we'll receive the contracts and the funding 12 months later. So I think that need is a critical need since there's already deterioration and that would be a better grant to go.
Thank you. Yeah. So if you might, just check that email out. It's good discussion. Again, it's an opportunity for us to find state funding to take care of something in the entity in the town. And if you will support that, I will fully put all my effort into in the next couple of weeks to try to find how we can better something in the town of East Hampton, but also using money from taxpayers in Plattsburgh. So.
You might want to also run it by Sam Klein.
Oh, Sam and I are working together on this. Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're working together on this. And I wanted to just see where the board's thoughts were. Please read those emails and just let me know. And that's all I have.
Nothing to add except for thanks to Dave and Sam for looking for outside funding and being creative with us. And nothing to add beyond that, other comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to abbreviate my liaison report in regard to the time. Saturday, the Wayne Scott CAC met. And as you heard from folks who live in Wayne Scott, with the advent of navigation in cars, one of the impacts, and maybe it's an unintended impact, was the traffic is now off of the main roads that are built to handle the traffic and going through the backstreets of Armageddon on what were essentially carriage and colonial roads. And that has had a tremendous, it's having a tremendous impact on the community. I received a video last weekend, which, you know, Wayne Scott Stone Road looked like the West Side Highway. The line of cars never ended. And so they spoke about traffic recommendations. I'll be bringing some of those to the board and also some counts of the traffic, the numbers that the police have recorded there through their traffic counters and speed limit awareness signs. There's two of them out there. I think folks will be stunned by the number of people that are traveling those back roads. I know that's happening across town. And it is a consequence of everyone having navigation at their fingers. Years ago, only a few people knew the back areas, mostly the people that lived in those neighborhoods. And then if everyone recalls when a book was written by Jerry Della Famina's daughter, I think she got really ostracized from the rest of the community. We do now see traffic, pass through traffic, traffic that isn't going to these neighborhoods, going through these neighborhoods at unprecedented rates. So they're looking for traffic calming, reduction of speed limit, et cetera, on those roads. Also, we presented again to the folks at the residents and the folks on the CAC, the implementation study. They support the implementation study. Plan that was presented to the town board, they just want to make it clear while they, they want to commit the South Fork Wind Farm, dedicated $5.5 million, Wayne Scott Hamlet dedicated $5.5 million. They also realize and just would like us to acknowledge that that, that won't cover everything. And as the town board has done in other hamlets, we would need bonding and to go out for funding for the rest of that. And even look to our county and state partners wherever we can for funding as well. And I think I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you. Ian?
I'll, I'll be very brief. There's a spring CAC meeting tonight at Ashwag Hall at 6:00 PM. The main topics of conversation will be clearing regulations and right-of-way rules, amongst other things. And then lastly, I just want to say, I visited Windmill Village with, with Council Member Town Flight last week or earlier this week. I can't quite, I guess it was last week. And had a really lovely meeting with seniors who all spoke in favor of the increased density and just. and just the need for senior housing. And while we've all discussed this as an issue, um, you know, we, we sat there with people who were, are frankly very concerned about what they were going to do. There's people on the waiting list. I've heard numbers of seven hundred and beyond of, of people on the waiting list at various senior developments. And so considering the conversation today, I think that was a well timed meeting and, um, really put faces and, and a personal touch on what is an obvious need.
Okay. So I am going to start with the, uh, statistics from the East Hampton Town Police Department from last weekend. You know, I feel like every week I say it was a very busy weekend, and it was once again. We had two hundred eighty nine events that were handled, including twenty four residential noise complaints and three commercial noise complaints with one summons issued. The P D handled seven motor vehicle accidents, thirty six medical aided cases, issued sixty two traffic citations, made six arrests, including four D W Is. Two of those D W I arrests were from a D W I checkpoint on the Nap Peak Stretch Friday evening, which was run in conjunction with the Suffolk Sheriff's Office. Additionally, P D handled the Clamp Shell Foundation fireworks over Three Mile Harbor on Saturday evening and the Rail Sun Surf Contest at Dish Plains on Sunday. On Thursday, I'm going to have a resolution on, and this is in reference to the referendum language that we'll need on the ballot for in November, uh, in order to give Suffolk County D P W the ability to, um, put in a road, roadway improvement project at the intersection of Three Mile Harbor and Springs Fireplace Road. Rob met with, uh, the Board of Elections on Friday, uh, of last week, and the proposed language is as follows. Shall the town of East Hampton discontinue as a town nature preserve and convey to Suffolk County a parcel of land located at the intersection of County Road forty, commonly referred to as Three Mile Harbor Road, and County Road forty one, commonly referred to as Springs Fireplace Road, for the purpose of a roadway improvement project that will address longstanding traffic delays and public safety issues at the intersection of Three Mile Harbor Road and Springs Fireplace Road. Now, I know we had a caller call in to public comment last week and saying that there was a reverter clause in the deed for that, uh, triangular piece of property, but that was only if it was used for residential or, uh, commercial purposes. Uh, traffic safety is a municipal use and so that should not be an issue. Uh, I just wanted to bring back, last week I had mentioned in my liaison report that the Eastville Historical Society was in dire need of a new roof. And, uh, we continue to work with Dr. Georgette Greer Key, the executive director there on ways that the town can help support their mission. Uh, as we all experienced at two thirty this afternoon, uh, and I had, you know, my apologies because I had no idea that we, our meeting was going to run that long, so I didn't believe we'd be in here.
But an hour later.
But an hour later, um, I just wanted to let folks know what happened. Uh, the town is participating in P S E, P S E G Long Island's Commercial System Relief Program. And today, uh, today by powering Town Hall, Justice Court, the Police Department, the Parks Department, the E M S Building, the Senior Center and the Highway Department all went to generator beginning at two thirty this afternoon and will be on generator until seven o'clock this evening. This is, the town has participated in this program since twenty nineteen and, and does so to help manage the high demand of like, for electricity during this heat wave and ensure that the grid's reliability for our residents. Uh, you know, P S E and G already, they, they know that there's going to be high demand. They really don't want to see blackouts or brownouts in communities. So there are a number of, uh, organizations, businesses, including our municipality that participates in this program in order to hopefully reduce outages, uh, in, in the town. Uh, speaking of a heat wave, uh, we're experiencing one right now. And I just want to remind folks, our beaches are open seven days a week, nine A M. to five P M. We, you know, we, uh, council member Lees talked about the strong rip currents. We, you know, always say swim near a lifeguard. Uh, lifeguard protected beaches are open nine to five, and that's Indian Wells, Atlantic Avenue, Albert's Landing Bay Beach, South Edison in Montauk, Dish Plains, Gin Beach, Maidstone Bay Beach, and Kirk Park Beach. Uh, the governor Hokel also has a new initiative and she's making New York State pools free of charge. So you can also cool off at the Montauk Down State Park. That swimming pool is open and, and free for all, uh, the, and it's open from ten A M. to five thirty P M. So we hope folks will take advantage of that as well. And now we are on to resolutions. So David, you're up first.
I am. I have, uh, I'm very happy to put forward resolution twenty twenty four, nine twenty five. This is the point Green River Cemetery caretaker, uh, Carl Hamilton, um, for annual fee of one thousand dollars retroactive to January first, twenty twenty four.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. Nine twenty six is the point seasonal employee in the Parks Department, Tri New, Newdrin, uh, custodian and wanted hourly rate of twenty two dollars and retroactive July eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. Nine twenty seven is the point seasonal lifeguards for July twenty twenty four. Uh, effective retroactive, the dates listed below through September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The names, positions, and baby scales below.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. Nine twenty eight is the point seasonal employees in the Parks Department, Luis Rodriguez for the beach cleaner, hourly rate of eighteen dollars an hour.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. Nine twenty nine is the title change of lifeguard for July twenty twenty four. Uh, retroactive to June sixteenth, twenty twenty four for Colin Schaver, uh, lieutenant lifeguard, hourly rate of twenty eight dollars an hour.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
I have resolution nine thirty, which is a clean energy communities grant award. Town received a grant funding, the amount of ten thousand dollars from the clean energies community to fund studies for three municipal buildings to identify recommendations for improving energy efficiency, with those buildings being East Hampton Town Hall, Justice Court and Sanitation. Whereas there was a discrepancy in the reporting of the number of full time employees working in the Justice Court Building at the time of the initial application and the price for the additional studies based on the F T E's increase from thirty four hundred to four thousand six hundred dollars, uh, whereas resolution twenty twenty four, two fifty four is amended to increase the funding for the C E C reports not to exceed twenty six hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, uh, resolution nine thirty one is approval of various special events for July twenty twenty four. First one is at Long House Reserve. It's a Long House Reserve Summer Benefit. This will take place Saturday, uh, seven twenty from six P M. to eleven P M. Next is, uh, Montauk Lighthouse Museum, the twenty eighth Annual Lighthouse Triathlon Spring Cup Relay, starting at Gin Beach, uh, end of East Lake Drive and ending at Montauk Point Lighthouse. Uh, that will take place on Saturday, uh, July twenty first from six A M. to ten P M. Setup will be the day, uh, the day, I'm sorry, did I say Saturday? Sunday, um, seven twenty one. Setup is the day before on Saturday, seven twenty, and the takedown is on seven twenty one.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have resolution twenty twenty four, nine thirty two. It's a provisional appointment and promotion to senior accountant for Alexander Papa John at an annual salary of eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and forty two dollars and seventy two cents for a forty hour work week effective retroactive to July fifteenth. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
I have resolution nine thirty three, which is to amend the C S E A Schedule A to add Animal Control Officer to Supervisor.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, resolution nine thirty four is to appoint, uh, as a reclassification and promotion to Animal Control Officer to Supervisor for Heather Miller. Uh, the hourly rate will, uh, be thirty six dollars and sixty cents, um, which is annually seventy six thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty two cents for a forty hour work week effective retroactive to July fifteenth.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution nine, uh, thirty five is amending resolution twenty twenty four, three thirty three to continue retaining outside consultants. And this resolution, uh, amendment is to extend the on-call services of consultants in order to continue the supportive reviewing applications to the Planning Board, Architectural Review Board, Zoning Board of Appeals from July first, twenty twenty four through the end of December, thirty first, twenty twenty, uh, four.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty four, nine thirty six is to amend resolutions twenty twenty three, nine seventy five and twenty twenty four, six thirty. And this is to, uh, address a typo that were in the rates for, for Questica, our budget software. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Nine thirty seven is to authorize a payment for a past due invoice to Arthur A. Regal Esquire for twenty twenty three in the total amount of thirty thousand dollars. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive section for C P F Personnel and Public Safety.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for sticking it out and thank you, L T V.
All of them.
Thank you, guys.
Your patience and understanding today.